3:00 PM. It is Tuesday, August 25th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Councilmember Sheil, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Allison.
Present.
Sheil, here. Rizzo.
Present.
Vielobos.
Present.
Tobias.
Present.
All right, seven members present. We have quorum. This is a special city council meeting, so we don't have meeting minutes to go over really very many items. The main thing is the second reading of the budget. But that being said, obviously, there are quite a few folks that have registered online to speak, as well as here at City Hall, majority of which, I believe, wanted to speak about the council action last week to rename Rebel Drive to Fahita Drive. So if there are no objections with the council, I wanted to open up Agenda Item Number Two and Number Five together. Reason being, it would give me an opportunity to say a few things, to let council speak if they desire and make any statements they would like. And then we can open up the public hearing, allow for the feedback on the item. And then if council wishes to take action, we can do so. That being said, Agenda Item Number Five is a reconsideration vote. So there's a parliamentary procedure that has to take place first. We have to vote to actually take the item back up on our agenda, which I am in support of, and it has been sponsored by two of the council members as well. So if there are no objections, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Agenda Item Number Five.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by the mayor, seconded by councilmember Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion? I actually think reconsideration is a non-debatable motion. So with that said, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. So with that, we'll open up Agenda Item Number Five and Agenda Item Number Two together. I just wanted to say a few things off the top. This has obviously been quite an interesting week for the entirety of the Kyle City Council, myself included. Some of the things that have happened this week are unfortunate, and I regret several of the decisions that I made over that time and have apologized to many people, in particular, for some of the language I used in some text messages that have been widely spread. You know, some of the language that was put into those text messages was insensitive and designed to be scintillating when there was no reason for me to engage in that manner. And I've apologized many times and here on the record, would like to apologize to the residents as well, because I know that even though sometimes text messages are intended to be private, it's been noted, and rightly so, that public officials, whenever you are sending correspondence via text, you should always assume that those text messages are available and should be available and on the public record. And that's certainly a valid criticism there as well. So to tell a little bit of the story of Fahita Drive and where that came from, it's good for the public, I think, to watch a lot of the discussion that we had last week as a council. That discussion was positive, joyous, and certainly, I felt that the entirety of the council had the best interest of the community at heart, even if the action that we took was one where the public was just not on the same page as we were. And that brings me up to another area where, you know, I certainly feel like I could have done better as the mayor. You know, everyone has only one vote, and so when council takes actions, you know, everyone is responsible for their particular vote and their statements. But the mayor has a unique role in that I help work with staff and the city manager to set agendas and try to discern the will of council and the direction of council, be it official direction or otherwise. You know, we often have times, and have had many times through years, where we are thinking about a tense issue and trying to find the best way to navigate that. It certainly was never lost on me that renaming Rebel Drive was polarizing. I was hopeful and desiring, when I brought the Agenda Item forward, to, I was desiring for the item to go smoothly and be accepted by the community. And part of the rationale for celebrating the life of Sonny Falcone and Fahita Drive was because it took a lot of the positive momentum that the city council has been building over the last, really, you know, eight months, but over the last year in general, and trying to capitalize on that so that we, as a council, could issue, you know, that could be unified behind a festival that we used to have here that we all have spoken publicly about trying to bring back, thinking positively about some of those particular aspects of our history. And so that could have been done better, though. And that's really where I feel like I probably messed up in several significant ways. You know, that it's tough, because whenever you get out of sync with what the public is willing to accept and support, you're on dangerous ground. And I never have pretended that I could cram something down the throats of the residents of Kyle. And even though sometimes I have proposed and voted on, for myself, on items that were controversial, this was not one that I honestly, that the choice of Fahita Drive is not one that I anticipated that would be controversial. But that's just my own ignorance. And had I properly been in, had I properly anticipated the way the community would react specifically to the naming of Fahita Drive, I certainly would have gone about it differently and would have liked to have had a much more involved public process. And so, you know, there have been two or three different instances, you know, over the course of the last four years that I can point to where council got out ahead of the community and has had to backtrack on specific action. I don't see reconsidering a vote as a slight on the council. I think that reconsidering a vote is honestly a, is an honest and effective way to demonstrate to the community that you are listening, even if the path to get to the right choice wasn't the best path, and even if there are consequences for someone like myself for, you know, for thinking that the public would accept something when it wasn't ready to. You know, the heart and the intentions of the council was, I felt like was good. There were, there have been some questions raised about the signs and whether the signs were ordered prior to the council taking action. The answer to that is, I have not, cannot confirm it, because I was not the one who, I don't order things. But I certainly, in the meetings leading up to and preparing for that item, did give my blessing for council, or for staff, to have those on order. And the reason was not nefarious. It was consistent with, many times in the past, you know, staff trying to make sure that they were prepared for council action. And there's an element of, you know, staff preparing for items that, you know, is kind of a go with your gut kind of situation. And from the vantage point that I had, you know, doing the best that I could without discussing with all of council, I felt like, I felt like the renaming of Fahita Drive was going to, was going to happen. And so I wasn't sure. I can never be 100% sure, but we had built a track record over the last year of being really in tune with each other as a group. And so I moved forward by giving the, you know, the blessing to staff to make that order. It was $750 for the signs. They were on order when we took the vote, 7-0. And so the order remained, and those signs did come in. I think that hopefully, there's a way to make some lemonade out of lemons. But, you know, the, I think there's certainly some ways for us to get our money back on those signs. And I know that staff is thinking about that, and council will have an opportunity to weigh in there as well. But it certainly is not lost on me that had it to do over, the sign order would have happened after the council action. Had I appropriately given credibility to the thoughts in my own head that this might not go over as well as I intended. So I want to apologize to, you know, to the residents of Kyle for getting out ahead of my skis. I want to apologize to the residents of Kyle for being disrespectful and flippant in a text exchange when I knew better than to do that and just did it anyway. And, and so, you know, there's really not a whole lot more to say other than I feel like that, at this point, it certainly makes sense for the council to reconsider this item. My thinking is that part of the problem that has come about from the renaming of Rebel Drive to Fahita Drive that honestly, well, is that it's connected. You know, in part, we're voting to remove a name, and there's a lot of reasoning and rationale behind that. And just removing the name Rebel Drive is certainly not, you know, a unanimous opinion in the public that we should do that. The other side of it, though, is what do we name the street? And I tried to put those all together and was hopeful that we would be able to move forward in unity and solidarity, both as a council and as a community. I think probably just tried to bite off more than we could chew with that particular item. And it's a lesson learned for myself, as well as this council that I've come to respect so much over the years, and in particular, in recent months. So with that said, you know, my recommendation would be that we name the road, for now, you know, Ranch to Market 150, RM 150, which is what it currently is, and replace the signs there. And in that way, we will, you know, separate the removal of the name Rebel Drive with the installation of whatever name council might choose at some future date. So I've also just wanted to say that, you know, over the last several days, I've probably received, you know, close to 100 different suggestions of names that we can name Rebel Drive. And there are some really good ones. I don't know where to go from here as far as how we go about choosing a road name that is appropriate outside of just calling it the state highway that it is. I don't personally feel like that we're in a place where, considering all that's happened in the last week, where this council is going to be able to come to a decision right away. But we're in a bit of a pickle, because we've already established the ordinance, and it is now Fahita Drive. But that's not something that we couldn't undo if we wanted to through action. It's not too late to do that. So those are the majority of the statements that I intended to make on this. I will, really, the next move can be up to the council. If the council would like to make some statements now, prior to receiving the public hearing comments, you're welcome to do that. Or if you would prefer to wait and just, and we can go through the list of folks who wish to come and speak on Fahita Drive, we can do that as well. And so I defer to the council if anyone has anything to say or feels strongly about getting the public hearing open right away.
Mayor, it's councilmember Rizzo. I do have a comment. First of all, I need to apologize. I need to apologize for being out of state last week and missing everything that was going on. I've got to apologize to citizens, to this council. I only get to visit my daughter twice a year, and last week was the week that I usually do it. And being out of touch is no excuse. But next, I need to apologize to the citizens and council again. When Sonny Falcone passed away, I kind of got overexcited. Sometimes my wife says I'm a big kid about things, and I get overexcited about things, and I do. I have, I'm naturally hyper. And when I heard about the tie between him and Kyle, I really got excited and thought, wow, this happened here in Kyle, Texas, at the St. Anthony's Fiesta, which was later to be the Mendez Fiesta Grounds. And I guess my excitement rubbed off on council and everybody else that sits up here. And, you know, I'm sorry. I mean, I do get excited about things, especially when it has to do with Kyle. Me growing up in Kyle, being a part of the fiestas, you know, I'm just really proud of my city. And getting really excited, I approached council with this, which in the beginning, they were pretty adamant that, no, it didn't happen in Kyle. And I was like, no, I guarantee you, it happened here in Kyle, Texas. And my persistence, I guess, finally wore them down, and they got excited about it as well. And I just feel really badly where this is gone, and I feel like I'm responsible for this. And I'm going to own up to it, because my excitement, without checking with the citizens to see if they were excited with it, I guess, has led us to where we are today, right now. And I feel really bad, I can tell you right now. No one hurts more than anyone than me right now, because I feel like I let everybody down, Ms. Council, the people I represent. But for the past year and a half, I can promise you, I've been advocating to get citizens more involved. I have reached out to people, I have posted meetings, my Facebook, my Twitter accounts. The other thing I've done is that I've added, I've worked with the communications department. I have added our meetings the next day at 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM, because our meetings tend to run a little bit late. And I was hoping that people could tune in. And I've shared that information as well. You know, and when, you know, when the citizens elected me to the office, I promised that I was always going to be a voice and listen to them. And I forgot to ask for their permission to go further with this Fahita thing. And where was it going to go, I had no idea. I was thinking about a festival. I never thought about a road, I never thought about anything else. You know, we were new to this, I didn't know where it was going to lead us. But my original goal was maybe bring back a Fahita festival. And that's what I was hoping on. And I guess my excitement just got the better of me, and I want to say I'm sorry. But I have advocated for everyone to be aware of what's going on. And I'm going to continue to do that, to get citizens to engage into our agendas and to, and do a better job of posting out information. I think I didn't do a good job of that, because people didn't voice their concerns till after the meeting. So shame on me, you know, I should have done a better job. But in the past year and a half, we have been a very busy council. We've worked on bringing together a PD bond, working to bring a Heroes Memorial to the citizens of Kyle during COVID-19, which was really challenging. I think that's really what wore me down, was that seeing everything that was going on in the community, the community spirits going down, I was reaching. I was looking for something that was going to bring some sense of incitement, something to our city. You know, our pie festival had gone down because of COVID-19. I just kept thinking, what can I do to bring something here? And I got really excited about this. I was really hoping on a Fahita festival here for Kyle, something that we could own. And I don't know, I guess I overthought it, and I'm really sorry. But I can promise you that that mistake won't happen again. I have learned from this. It's a good life council lesson for me. As in my, in my first year, I'm learning, and I'm sorry that I dropped the ball on this. And I'm, I just don't know what else to say. But I can tell you that everything that I've done in the last three decades of serving the community, I've always done for my heart. And sometimes my heart gets me in trouble. I will volunteer for things, and I get overexcited about things. And I, I sometimes, my wife has to tell me, slow down, Robert. You got to slow down. You're going too fast, you're getting too crazy with this. And unfortunately, she wasn't here that day, and to slow me down. But I just, I just don't understand. I, I feel really bad, that's all I can say. And from my heart, I'm sorry. But I have truly tried to serve the people at this seat, and that's what I'm doing. And I'm going to continue to do, if the citizens want me to. And I'm going to continue to serve in the same way that I've served the community for three decades, with a servant's heart. And that's what I plan to continue to do. And I'm not here in this seat to look for the next step or look for a political career or anything like that. I'm here totally for service. So for someone to come out and threaten me about the next election, I can tell you, it hurt, because I'm not here for a political gain. I don't even know if I'm going to run again. I just know that, right now, I promised the citizens three years of service, and I'm going to keep that promise. And I'm going to do a better job of serving, I promise you. And I know that I'm rambling, but I'm just really sorry that we're in this situation right now and that I've brought this much pain to our city and to our council. And I'll just need to leave it at that. Thank you.
Counsel, that Alex Vielobos. That excitement was over nearly three years of garnering the appreciation of diversity and culture in the city of Kyle. My first year was a celebration at Tobias with the namesakes there, where we talked about Hispanic Heritage Month. And those that remember walking all throughout town, asking all of the multi-generational families for their histories. I took oral histories and digital histories, and they provided pictures, and they provided, you know, different pieces that occurred here, things that I just enjoyed learning about. People that served, people that were educators, people that were part of the government, people that were part of council. And landmarked certain areas in this town that didn't happen too long ago. I mean, the significance of this location and the significance of the location of the CVS is very significant. If you don't know the history of what was that CVS 50, 60 years ago, you can appreciate where we've come. The following year, we had an additional celebration through Hispanic Heritage Month, and we celebrated Mr. and Mrs. Chapa at the school that their namesake. And we had a great celebration. And on both of those years, we had proclamations that were written to celebrate that diversity and the appreciation of what many have done before I was here, many that have created opportunities for me and continue to do. And this year is no different. That research came from the oral histories of many different people that I've spoken to here in this city as being a member of this court. And one of those pieces of history definitely was the festivals that occurred on that piece of property where Casa Mari is today. And, you know, coming forward, and then hearing some of the consternation about the renaming of that road was, was, to me, you know, I took it very personal. But I'm also here at the will of the people, and I'm here to listen and learn. I'm here to be guided by them, and I'll continue to serve that. You have the power to vote, and you have the power to guide with your engagement. And I'm here to listen. But one thing that comes to mind, and then I think the mayor brought it up in his discussions, was, you know, we have to communicate on this dais. And we have to, there has to be certain laws and certain policies that we have to follow in communication. But to come forward with very little information on that road, to come forward with something that had already been tasked in June, I'm just, how do we, how do we address the communication that wasn't there for us to be in this position, to make decisions, critical decisions in our government, without the ability of understanding of what are these things, these steps were pushed forward then? And we come here today to make those votes, to change those things. I just, I feel as though as, I didn't, I didn't quite listen appropriately. I didn't, we didn't, we didn't take our cautious approach, and we didn't take the opportunity to listen to the people before we made any changes. And I've been that oper, I've been that person to kind of advocate for that since day one. It's been about what I've said, it's been about what I've done. Meeting at people's homes, having regular meetings here in town halls before the pandemic. Many of you were here for a lot of those meetings, listening and learning on what you wanted in this government. Too bad that, about the pandemic, but I think some of us lose touch sometimes because we don't have that connection with the community the way we should because of that. And we should have took that as an opportunity to understand that and make sure that we were extra cautious whenever we were determining the future of our town. So I definitely do apologize for that. But I will not apologize for maybe that particular piece of miscommunication. I believe that, should we engage our staff in directing them to do things before we are ready? I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate. And me being in the position that I am have always been one to call that piece out. And I'm just still trying to wrestle with that approach, is that we hadn't made a decision, so we shouldn't be making decisions in earnest. Our government doesn't work that way. And it should never work that way. So I'm glad that all of you are here. I am very appreciative of the commentary, but to let the citizens know that I'm still that person that when you say something, I listen, and I will take the actions that are appropriate to address the issues that are of your concern. And that's why I'm here. And thank you very much for this opportunity.
Mayor Mitchell, this is Councilman Tobias. I do have something to say, but out of respect for the people that are here and the people that are online at this time, is there a way we can go ahead and let them speak and hear their concerns and comments? And after they are done, I will make my statement. In respect to those that are here and their time that are here, thank you for coming out. If we could do that, please.
Certainly. The reason for allowing us to speak first was so that they could have some context for the tone of the meeting. So, but it is understandable. I thought it would be helpful for them to hear from us first.
I'll wait for it when they're done. Thank you.
That's totally appropriate, that's fine. It is, is there anyone else who wishes to speak before I open up the public hearing? Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm wishing to speak as well, but I'll follow Tobias's lead.
Okay. With that said, we'll, we'll open up the public hearing. We have several folks who are registered to speak at City Hall and several who registered to speak online. I was thinking that it might be best to go back and forth. There are some folks who have registered in citizen comments, some who have registered on the public hearing, some who have registered on the specific item. Certainly, we will call citizen comments a little later on in the meeting. I'm trying to wrap kind of everything up underneath Fahita Drive in one public hearing. So we're going to call the folks that registered specifically for the public hearing first. And then after, we call the folks who have registered specifically for the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on any other item, I'm sorry, if there's anyone who still wishes to speak on Fahita Drive, who has signed up to speak during citizen comments or during the item itself, you are certainly welcome to just go ahead and speak now. Of course, if you would like to wait and speak later, that would be fine. So with that said, Jennifer, do you have somebody there first that you want to call?
The first person is Frank Molina.
Okay. Hello, everybody. If you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record and then limiting your comments to three minutes. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay. My name is Frank Molina. My home is located here in hometown Kyle. I've been here in Kyle for over 30 years, retired here from the military. I feel kind of bad, but after everybody said what they said there, realized the mistake made by the council. And I was rather surprised till today was the expenditure of the signs anticipating, of course, for those that have been in the military, if we had done something like that, we might have lost some battles for sure. I'll keep this rather to the point and I think the mayor might be ahead of me. I was rather surprised, to say the least, when I first saw a small report online saying this council had changed the name Rebel Drive to Fahita Drive. So my first thought, okay, fake news. It wasn't. I went to online and saw your meeting, the ad was recorded and I sat through there. I wasn't wise enough to kind of speed things up. So I think it was agenda number 21, National Fahita Day was number, I think, seven. So I said, it's got to be in here soon. So sure enough, it was there, it was passed unanimously, which surprised me. I thought for sure it would have kicked into some on the council that maybe you may be looking without realizing some trouble. Though the action of this council was done with good intentions and as I saw it on the, on the replay and here now, I feel it wasn't thought out very well, which is kind of late. So I'm here like others. My only last question is why? Why does the name have to be changed to a person? Why? In the military and outside world, I learned after I retired is to keep it simple, very simple. Why does it have to? I recommend to keep it at FM 150. All you're doing is changing the signs that you have there because they intersect with other streets and say FM 150. Nothing to insult anybody, not to draw any controversy. And then sometime in the future, if you want to honor somebody, then do so. Now, I did like the idea, but then I heard it on the radio, they were talking about that on the talk show on 150. And they thought, they kept making the same mistake like one of the council member, maybe it might have been her, Falcon could be read as Falcon. And they were saying Falcon. This is bingo. They thought like somebody else says, maybe we should put the word Sonny Falcon. But I've been here 30 years and maybe because I'm not very, is my three minutes? Okay. I'll close by saying I've been here 30 years and I've never participated. So I really didn't know who Sonny Falcon. I did eat his food though, and I appreciate the effort and the time from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, next up, I'm going to call from virtual, signed up on the public hearing item number two, Iona Olive.
Hello, this is Iona Olive. Could I get some confirmation? I'm coming through on audio.
Yes, ma'am. Loud and clear.
Okay. I will try to be really free. I just wanted to appear virtually to voice my support for the renaming. That it was a good idea, although we've all suffered some thoughts, some consequences that have been acknowledged. And I support a participatory process for choosing a new name, which has also, I think, been acknowledged that y'all will try to set the pulse on where the, the public is on that. And also just to suggest that it would also probably help to put the cost in perspective because that's also another objection, other than just sort of a philosophical objection to changing the name of the road. I'm sure y'all are aware that also that if you could provide as many facts as possible to show that it's affordable or that there will be support for businesses and residents that will have to make changes, that it probably helps as well. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Iona. Jennifer, go ahead.
The next person is, I might pronounce it wrong, Eusebio Chevo Pastrano, Jr.
Good evening, guys. My name is Chevo Pastrano. I grew up in this town. I had the privilege of watching my dad serve on the city council most of my childhood when the city council was held over catty corner from this building here. I'm, I'm a young man who has a lot of pride in this town. I don't live here anymore, but I own property here. I own property on FM 150. By the way, Mr. Tobias, thank you very much, sir. Thank you for respecting the time of the citizens and the people that are here to speak on behalf of or against whatever the item is. Thank you for understanding that we've taken time out of our day to come and, and, and talk about this and public comments are always number one. With that said, I'm going to look at the TV screen. I'm speaking mostly to, to the mayor who, I'm the attorney who you speak of with the text exchanges. If you look at the beginning of the text exchanges, I try to wrap it up by saying y'all have a good weekend. The two of you on the screen right now, Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Coach, the two of you continued that on, trying to bully me into shutting it down and just agreeing with Fahita Drive. This was y'all's concoction from the beginning. You guys have been working on this name since at least June. The signs were ordered, not with your blessing, with your instruction. You guys knew that they were coming while you're sitting, we can all watch the meeting from last week, and while you're sitting and you're discussing the different options, you know in the back of your head, those signs are coming. That was all a facade. It was all a facade to make us all believe that you guys were actually having deliberations here on Zoom or actually here, when in reality, in the back of your head, you knew that those signs were coming. And as soon as those signs came, Mr. Coach was showing them off and had a cop, had one of those signs with him. Everybody knows those things in town. You guys can't hide that in a little town. We know that that's true. You had to come with an explanation, that explanation being that it was with your blessing, not your instruction, but with your blessing. I know different. That's troubling because in order to even have your blessing, you would have approved, blessed the expenditures of, of city money, not even having taken a vote yet. It would have been okay with you that that money was being spent, not even knowing that that road would ever be okay with the citizens of Kyle, not ever knowing that the rest of these council members would have agreed with you and voted four to three in favor of that. But nonetheless, with your blessing, you agreed to that. And so when you speak of those text exchanges and you talk about how they were manufactured or designed for certain bad influences, and I think you use words like impure, remember, I tried to shut those down. Y'all kept them going.
Thank you, Mr. Pastrano. Next up, Joseph Finity.
Yep, thank you. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I want, I am Joseph Finity and I want to thank you guys and I appreciate the time that the citizens can speak up at this special session of Kyle City Council. I'm phoning it in as well from, I'm not down the road, I'm in Los Angeles, California. So why is some guy two time zones and a thousand miles away speaking up about Kyle's Fahita Drive mess? I'll tell you. I spent the first 18 years of my life in Kyle, Texas. After graduating high school, of course, attending high school, I was a Hayes rebel. Graduating Live Oak, the academy at Hayes, I was an academy rebel. And in my twenties, when I took off and left the state, I was really feeling like a rebel. Now today in LA, you guessed it, still feeling like a rebel. Regardless of where life beyond Kyle has taken me, has taken you, I continue to do what most of us do on some level, which is to embrace our inner rebel, rise up, listen to your drive, your path, your road. The word rebel is defined in part as a person who rises. No matter where I go in this world, by the way, no matter where I rise, my rebel roots remain firmly planted in Kyle. As a matter of fact, I own property as well in Kyle. You'll find my property along a small stretch of road that is, you know where this is going, Rebel Road. The rebel I've been in my life has had nothing to do with the ghost of our central Texas past, Colonel Jack Hayes, Captain Fergus Kyle. If you're going to change a name, might I suggest first applying some critical thought and then making a change that actually matters. Maybe start with the name of our town named after a man who proudly sported his Confederate grays and a locket featuring a photograph of Andrew Jackson, his father's bestie. That's Mr. Kyle. And I'm not going to get started on Mr. Hayes. The proposal to change the word rebel to Fahita, that's not just a costly inconvenience, it's an insult to many people I know and love. There are many ways, so many ways to honor the late, great Sonny Falcon. Fahita Drive is not one of them. Fahita Drive is a joke and Kyle, Texas is not. Plus I'm currently on a diet and I don't need the temptation heading down that Fahita Road, or I don't need to see that sign. I will see you guys down the road, Rebel Road. And I encourage everyone to connect with me beyond this three minute conversation at FahitaDrive.com. Let's hope that FahitaDrive.com, a dot com is all Fahita Drive becomes. Thank you to the mayor and to the citizens and to the city council for letting me speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Finity. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Rebecca Chapa.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Rebecca Chapa. I'm standing here before you because of the recent name change of Rebel Drive to Fahita Drive. The conversations I've had with family and friends have been in, have not been in favor of this change. I understand and respect the removal of Rebel Drive. To me, the simplest thing to do would have kept the original FM 150. There might have not been as much backlash that you're receiving now. I also get the idea of bringing in some heritage influences, but why not have a Fahita contest in October during Founder's Day or another day? This again proves to me how disconnected this dais is from the community and why I had asked at a previous meeting to continue the community open communications that we had when we were doing our Main Street issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. I do not have anyone on item two, item five has come up. So Mr. Sandra Rouch. I'm sorry if I said that wrong.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity to speak publicly. I wish to speak to the expense of a street name change. It was stated in your meeting last week, I listened to it, that there would be, this would be a small burden to a few businesses and individuals. It is my opinion that it is not a small burden. It will collectively cost thousands and thousands of dollars and thousands of hours of labor to change all of the documents. And it's for, for a 1.6 mile stretch of a major road. It's, it will involve attorney fees, it's for legal documents, CPA's for financial documents, webmaster's, everybody's marketing materials, changes in signs. It's, I, I am a property owner and a small business owner on Rebel Drive. It's, we're in the middle of a pandemic and businesses are going out of business by the thousands in every small town everywhere. To do anything that might hurt small businesses further with a financial burden for no particular reason is unconscionable, in my opinion. We can still have a Fahita Festival every August 18th and celebrate Sonny Falcon, but it shouldn't put any small business at risk that's of going under because of an undue expense for a address change. That's like, it's like having the burden of a change of address without getting to move somewhere. That's, there's also the matter of the city expenses. It's, I think it's completely unwarranted and the timing couldn't be worse financially. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Hello, my name is Stephen Guzman and I'm a business owner on Rebel Drive. I am the owner of Deep Roots Animal Clinic and I have, well, first I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council and I have greatly enjoyed, the business is fairly new, it's a year and a half old, and greatly enjoyed my time here serving the citizens of Kyle and, and their pets. My concern with this proposed name change does relate to the, the business expense of changing countless accounts, documents, legal, the list goes on for a very long time. And I have other businesses, other colleagues in business along this stretch as well. And so I'm here to voice that concern in regards to a name change as well as the particular name change that I think has probably been spoken of enough at this point, but it's maybe not the most tasteful for my business to have that, that name of, of the street on it. But that's, that is my comment.
Thank you very much. Next up, Abigail Silva.
Hi. Hi, this is Abigail Silva. Can I get confirmation that you guys are hearing me okay?
Yes, ma'am. Loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. As I said, my name's Abigail Silva. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Kyle as well as a property owner here. My first want to thank you for this platform to share a concerned citizen's viewpoint. Last week, I stumbled upon what I thought was a much needed joke on Facebook shared by one of our city council members in celebration of National Fahita Day. So I saw it, thought it was a joke until it turned out that it wasn't. And after further digging into it, I saw that it was a somewhat thoughtful decision used to celebrate the deep and rich culture of Kyle, Texas. That was a direct quote from Councilman Vielobos. So you'll forgive me when I say, no, I don't believe that this decision does that. Mr. Mayor, you said that in naming public entities, cultural diversity should be taken into consideration as well as our history and who and what we are in memorializing these names. And I completely agree with you. However, I think that Fahita Drive misses the mark. If you're looking for something that is, and I quote, significant to local culture and better suited to reflect the diversity of the city and specifically in honoring Sonny Falcon, the Fahita King, perhaps something more direct would have been ideal as we've done so already in our community with other roads like Burlison, Negley Drive, Fergus Drive, and even South One Street. So that just kind of begs the question, why didn't the city council at that time think Fahita Drive would have been more appropriate than something like Sonny Falcon? A city council member is elected to represent the people he or she served, to hear their voices and work in their best interest. So I would hope that the petition that was emailed to each of you containing, I think it was almost 1,100 signatures, as well as endless comments on social media and other platforms would show you that Fahita Drive decision that was made last week didn't accomplish that. So today I ask my city council to reconsider this name and to move to trying to name it something else to 150, honestly, any name other than Fahita Drive. So I would like to think that you guys had your best intentions with all of this. It sounded like everybody did have their best, have their best intentions at heart, but like proverb says, the path of destruction is paved with good intentions. And so as I said earlier, the job of the city council is to work in the best interest of our community. So I hope you've read the online comments and seen the petition and heard from your own network to understand the dissent from your community. And after all that, if you And after all that, if you still think that Fahita Drive is what's in our best interest down the road despite all of it, then I guess it means that we don't recognize our own voice. So thank you for your service and your dedication to our city, and thank you for this time.
Thank you, Abigail. Jennifer, do we have anyone else?
Yes, next up is Peter Parcher.
Well, to start this, I'm Peter Parcher. I am a candidate for mayor, and on this particular topic, I've been asked to speak on behalf of many residents that have been talking to me. Fahita Road. From what I've been told, they don't particularly like the name. Some of them agree with it, they want to express their willingness to honor Sonny, but they would prefer to see a name more like Sonny Drive, or as one other person put it, Freedom Drive. Why not do something like that, that everybody can get behind? It wasn't so much the name, it was the way it was done. It was brought up by the mayor, I'm just going to take this off. It was brought up by the mayor in, I believe, June, on one of his, Facebook, I believe it was, and he's, at that time, said, you know, "We'll take this and we'll go and we'll take it to a vote for the citizens." I guess at the time he didn't realize he couldn't do that. Y'all arranged to have it talked about here, and like many others, I thought you guys would talk about it, put it out to us, we'd have a chance for some input, and it didn't happen that way. The past is past. So basically, what the people have asked me to ask you, please, if you go ahead with this, please, don't make a decision this evening on a name, but go ahead and reach out to the public, take some time. You know, there's so many suggestions of ways you can do that. One was here, have a competition, you know? Another one I saw today was have high school students, or students, period, have each school come up with a name. Have the groups that we have in Kyle come up with a name. yourselves, as council members, come up with a name, other than Fahita, I think, but, you know, that's just me. So, the costs haven't covered, a lot of the points I have have already been covered. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your effort, I do, very much. And I think on this one, it just got a little ahead of everybody, including us, the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parcher. Next up, Ms. Lila Knight.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Lila Knight, and I want to thank you very much for holding this public hearing. However, from the remarks you made at the beginning, it appears that, once again, you may have already decided that it's not going to be Fahita Drive, it's going to be just our M150. I don't know if you know this or not, but our post office is on that road, its address is 555 Rebel Drive. You have consistently locked the citizens out of public input. You do this all the time. Yet, you complain when we don't show up. You also ridicule us often when we do speak up and give our opinions. You complain about low voter turnout, yet you are actually the ones who are responsible for all of that. You do not engage your citizens in making decisions, and I hope that you can do better in the future. My neighbor, Alfred Dambroano, wasn't able to sign up in time to speak, but he asked me if I would say for him, quote, "Leave the road name alone," unquote, and that's his opinion. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Evangeline Chapa.
Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me this time. I just want to say, I don't appreciate the renaming of Rebel Drive to Fahita Drive. A simple farm road, 150 will do. The name Fahita does not do justice to the man being honored. It is not significant to the local culture, and it certainly does not reflect the diversity of the city. Mayor, back in June, you posted on Facebook, and I'm going to quote, "I'm a Southern country race white boy. I know and fully understand Southern culture and pride. In July, I will ask the council to place remaining Rebel Drive on the November ballot. It's time our residents had a say in what they think is appropriate to honor." Well, after reading your post, Mayor, I was upset because this is not, this was not when the, this was when the media was following the protesters all over the nation. So renaming Rebel was definitely a must, I agree. I was also against putting the renaming of Rebel Drive on the November ballot, and I voiced my opinion in June. I figured y'all, I figured y'all as council members have come with a better solution instead of, I'm sorry, I figured that y'all could have come with a better solution instead of putting it in the November ballot. Mayor, council members, I know, I have hope that this was a mistake and we can forget it, work on it, and I know that y'all have put a lot of time, many hours, working, and y'all have made a lot of decisions, but this one thing has really upset it people. And I'm thinking that y'all, us, can work together and just get the best that we can and keep on going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapa. Next up, Ms. Deborah Martin.
Yes, this is Deborah Martin. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. What I thought was community camaraderie as a definition for this, it sounds like it was more about promoting the festival, the Fahita Festival. I guess what came to my mind was it was more about the council culture speaking out and giving their way once again. Rebel has a lot of meaning, like someone else pointed out. I oppose the name change to anything. I also am very concerned that the business owner says, "How much this is going to cost to the city?" I have a hard time believing that $750 for the signs that are going to be placed wasn't there. And what about all the city council? Like someone else mentioned, I won't go over it again. This is very pertinent, and I'm more concerned as a former small business owner about the cost and time it's going to take for small business to reach out to every supplier, change their business cards for everybody, if it applies, stationery. The city will be throwing away stationery as well, or, I'm sorry, no you won't, because you're not on Rebel. I'm sorry. And it's just, it's ridiculous. I don't even know what else to say. You can advertise the Fahita Festival in many ways without changing the name of the road, so that's just absurd. So I'm really worried about our struggling small businesses, the fact the signs have already been made, it sounds like you could, you could swallow a $750 purchase, I'm not worried about that. But I really have to say that if this is being done, and it's in various places in the news, that it is related to the Confederacy, which is, to me, is ridiculous, that I'm really going to think hard when I vote on any request in the bond measures for the city. I love this city, but if it's managed like this, I'm going to really have to consider my votes around, you know, the council, mayor, and any bond measures. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have no more forms for this item that we need to hold. Can I be included in this item instead of the other?
You can, you have a form filled out, so.
Can I talk on this item?
You can.
Yes, anyone who wishes to speak on this item may do so, whether they signed up for it specifically or not.
Thank you. It appears I signed, I checked the wrong box. Mayor and council members, I guess before I start, I'm going to ask for a point of clarification at some point, because I know the motion to reconsider was approved, but then there was not a follow-up motion, so I assume that's coming in a few minutes. Okay, I really want to start by thanking Councilmember Tobias for his immediate recognition of the pulse of the community and bringing this issue back for reconsideration, and I appreciate the rest of you joining in on that when the time came. And perhaps this idea was intended to be, it was with good intentions, and I think it were misplaced, but it was good intentions to recognize the diversity of Kyle. It just was a miss. In fact, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that it was nothing but misplaced good intentions, because the alternative is really just not good for the city of Kyle. I understand that there's future development that includes some reference to Fahita fields, which is still baffling to me, and I hope that when we move on, that there is enough input to realize that this Fahita thing, however well-intentioned, is not really identified with Kyle. I'm a Kyleite for generations. I was a little girl when we would go to the Mendez Fairgrounds and eat tacos and everything else. We did that for years before that moved to the church fairgrounds. The Mendez Fairgrounds, by the way, my grandmother is Mendez, so that's part of my family. So during that time, there were plenty of families from Austin that would come and put their puestos with food, but Sonny Falcone was not a big deal at that time. Maybe history, looking back, it's turned into a big deal, but that wasn't a deal then. So I feel like this Fahita thing has gone too far. For instance, I noticed on the website, the history of Kyle has now been updated to conclude this whole thing about Fahitas. And I'm like, "I was born and raised here, and that's never been a thing." It's just not something that the community has been known for, and in fact, it's now subject to ridicule. I know that we have gotten to the point where you're going to rescind that, I hope, but I'm asking that, on top of that, that council members will publicly offer comments on this record to say that Fahita will not be considered for any future name of any future road, because once we have that on the record, we feel comfortable that we don't have to watch everything. And furthermore, that it won't be considered for any fields or such. Somebody said, "Let's have a Fahita Festival." I think that's great. I don't think the naming of something in Fahita is of any stature, a compliment to the culture. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you being here to listen.
Those are the, is there anyone who is online still who wishes to speak on the Fahita Drive situation? Who's called in, I think.
No more online.
Okay, I have Mr. Max Vasquez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I stand before you here, in front of you. My name is Max Vasquez, I live here in Kyle, I've been here 26 years. I stand before you as a disabled American veteran, and I stand here in front, representing my brothers, some of those that gave their all, I gave some. And we're talking about name change on Rebel Road, and I talked to a lot of people in my neighborhoods. I got a next-door, next-door Kyle, got on the website, and there was some big discussion on the name of the street. Talking to a lot of people online, we talked about it and we said, "What's an appropriate name that would benefit the city, the town, the city?" And then we said, "You know what? This town doesn't even celebrate Veterans Day. There is no Veterans Memorial in this town. Buda, St. Marcus, they all have Veterans Day parade celebrations. We don't have nothing here. I guess we don't, I guess we don't count like we did when we first went in the military. Remember, we came back to an ungrateful nation." And now, we're talking about, "Let's change the street name." So what can we name it? And I said, "Why don't we call it Patriot Drive, or Patriot Road, or Veterans Road? Let's honor those veterans that gave their all from here from Kyle, that we have all forgotten about them." We can't forget about them. We talk about, "Okay, it's going to be expensive to do this road, just change this road, change the names and all that." Yes? How expensive is for somebody to give their life? What is the cost of them giving their life? For what? They had to go fight a war that they didn't want. I went to fight a war that nobody wanted, and I came back to an ungrateful nation, and to this day, I live with it. And there's nothing that's going to cure me for it. I suffer from PTSD, yes. The government is trying to take care of me, because the government, the VA is not 100%. I'm still fighting for my benefits. So we can't forget those brave men, young boys, fathers, brothers, sisters, mothers, that gave their life for this country. We can't even celebrate them in this town. We have a VFW here. We have the Amvets on the road also, barely struggling to get by. But we're here, we help the community out as much as we can. The VFW that goes a long way out. Amvets handle all the parking at the all the events at the park. Yes, we're getting old, you know, it hurts, and everybody always tells me, "Welcome home." But I said, "Don't welcome me home. There's 55,274 guys still missing. When they're home, I'll be home." Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Sir, could you wait for a minute? I'd like to share something with you real quick. I'd like to share that we are building a Veterans Memorial here in the city of Kyle, and I'm very passionate about it, as well as the rest of the council, and I promise you that we're working with the veterans and the Amvets, and we're going to bring a very beautiful hero's memorial to honor all those that have served, and also those that are on the front lines, whether police, fire, EMS, dispatchers, but mainly our veterans as well, because I truly appreciate your service. Thank you all that you've given for us and for our country, but know that we haven't forgotten you. We're going to do something here for you in the city of Kyle, I promise you. And it's already in the works, and it's gotten further than it's ever been, and I just want to thank you for your service, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your acknowledgement, folks. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. That's all that I have online, as well as that's been sent to me via text on those that are there. Is there anyone else at the city hall that wishes to speak?
Mayor Mitchell, I just received a text message of someone who was online and was disconnected, so I'll be working to get them reconnected.
Well, if that is the case, then what, if it's okay with the council, what we'll do is we'll leave the public hearing open. If they, if the citizen comments feed gets reconnected, we'll, we'll bring that person in between further commentary. So I'll leave it open, but we'll turn the floor back over to council, who wishes to speak. Councilor Ellison, Sheil, Tobias.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Tobias. Again, good evening. I would like to first thank all the citizens that came out this evening and spending your time, and respectfully, during this public hearing. As, as of course you're aware, last Tuesday, we the council voted to rename Rebel Drive Fahita Drive. Personally myself, I got really energetic about the discussion. And that's when I looked at it as a celebration of the Hispanic culture and so forth. And, and it was not intended to disrespect anybody on that end, or, or, or my community. And, and I owned my vote on that. The following morning, the outcry came, a very loud outcry came. And after speaking with friends, many constituents, phone calls, text messages, and even with people in my own household, in my family, and my, my dear friends, I realized that I made a mistake. And in hindsight, I realized I did not do enough for this community. When I ran for this office, that was my number one thing, was to engage community involvement and allowing people to have a voice. And I'm taking full responsibility on me as a councilman for not allowing that to happen. That is where I failed you. But I learned, and I made my amends, I'm learning from my mistakes. And still, as of right now, when we're doing this public hearing, you come first. Your voice comes first because we represent you. And I, I know I may be considered the rookie in the new boot, when people call me at my job on this, being on council. But we got to be better council, to be more transparent. We've got to step up our game a little bit more to add more communication, find out what kind of communications we can address and improve on, whether it's through our technology, whether it's through our communications board, or whatever it is. But just remember that you matter, and that's what it comes down to. And when it comes down to the finances of this city, we need to respect you because you are the taxpayer. You are the ones paying the bills at the end of the day. We just don't go out in my household, just go out and buy a brand-new car and not let daddy know about it. Trust me, I know that. They pay the bills. We've got to be respectful for that. So in that, I just wanted to leave it at that, to where I think this is a, a learning curve for me, myself, and I'm speaking for myself. But I just feel that council, I know we can do a better job moving forward, continuing to be the team that we say we're going to be, and involve each other in decisions. And, and again, work with the community to where we don't have to have something like this happen again. Thank you. I yield my time.
Mayor, and actually, the citizens of Kyle. First of all, thank you for expressing your comments, your concerns, your issues, everything that has come to us in the past seven days. It has been very enlightening. When I placed my vote, I was most definitely placing it to really remove Rebel Drive. And I went along with the excitement of the fajita name, and I own that. And I am still in just very much favor of removing the name of Rebel Drive for the connotation that it does bring to numerous citizens of our city. And I think back that over 100 years ago, if I had lived 100 years ago, I was the property of my husband. And if there had been an icon to that, and there was, there were icons to the people who are the anti-suffragettes, we'll just call it that. But unfortunately, it doesn't really translate to today. But if there was an icon and a street was named after it in the city that I lived in, that would be hurtful to me. And so, taking that into concept with what rebel means to a lot of our citizens, then I am in full favor of removing the name. Now, the question then becomes, what do we name it? And I'm going to sit with the discussion of council as we open that discussion up. But again, I just wanted to let everybody know that, yes, I did get into the excitement of, you know, it was celebrating the fajita that day and everything, and I just, I went along with it, and I should not have. And I most definitely appreciate everybody's comments and look forward to hearing any more that come into the future. So thank you.
Mayor.
Councilor Ellison, you want to go now? We did get the last citizen comment for the public hearing back online.
Allow them.
You just texted me. So go, go ahead, Jamie. Jamie, full and wide, are you, are you reg, are you in? I, I heard we also.
Can you hear me?
Yes. She said a guy dropped again, but she'll come. Yeah.
We're trying to get everyone reconnected right now, but they're not connected yet.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to second the appreciation that has been stated by my colleagues on the dais for the residents coming tonight and taking the time, whether in person or virtually, to speak on the item. Also want to thank the numerous, countless residents that have reached out to us. I know we all have received correspondence and various things. And I want to sincerely state that that is always very much appreciated. And I encourage our fellow residents to, to do that. It's a, I've had a lot of thoughts about this. I probably won't convey all of them this evening. But I, I do, I was listening to the comments earlier of my colleagues. And Councilmember Rizzo, I really felt a connection to those, those comments. You know, we, we had a discussion about this last week. And as I stated last week in my comments, my objective was to get rid of Rebel. And I appreciate my colleagues that have, even today, doubled down.
You are muted.
So sorry that there was a problem and you were disconnected.
Doubled down on that stance. So, so I certainly appreciate that. And I know there's been comments about various things with canceling items and, and different things and changing. You know, I spoke last week about living in a community that accepts you and is also willing to empathize with you. And how much that can be a very loving gesture in helping a person or a community feel welcome. It certainly isn't about offense. I certainly am not one that gets easily offended and certainly seeing words and different things. But it's, it's not even a connotation. It's a direct recognition of the mascot from the school. And the school's mascot was named after the Confederate battle soldier. And I appreciated the many great suggestions, and there have been many great suggestions on what to name the road. I think with fajita, it was something that I, you know, as was stated many times, that it was a little, little-known fact about our city, that it was, you know, Councilmember Rizzo, you were being a leader. And you convinced other leaders of the importance and significance of that history thing. And we thought it was really neat. But as has been stated, both prior to this meeting and tonight, the mark was missed. And I think that a government, a council, a leader, anybody, should be willing to accept when they have, have missed on something and, and truly gotten something wrong. And our community did not appreciate this and did not embrace it. And we need to acknowledge that and our part in, in probably also leading to that. And so, I do feel terrible as well for how this has gone down. It certainly was not meant as a joke or to offend anyone. And certainly, people were, my sincerest apology. I feel like a lot of things have really been disappointing throughout this, this process. And I want to not be missed in publicly denouncing Mayor Mitchell's comments in the text message. That, you know, I was thrilled to have been a part of and had the support of my colleagues in the city and others in our Dialogue for Peace and Progress in June. And we had so many great, difficult, and heartwarming discussions to move our city in a more progressive way of understanding and being accepting of others. And our city, I'll be a testament that we have done a great job of that. We can always look for ways to continue to improve ourselves. And so I'm, I'm grateful for being a community that, that shares that, that view. But the comments, they were made, however heated or their circumstance, they shouldn't be staid. And Mayor, I think, you know, you and I have known each other for a while now. I know that is not, you know, who I've come to learn and, and be acquainted with. And I think as, as leaders, is one of those things, we do have to be conscious of what we say at all times. And that can be tough because we, we're just like everyone else in this city. We're residents as well, we're, we're people, but we have an extra responsibility. And I just want to unequivocally denounce those comments because that is not about peace and progress. And that is what we're trying to lead our city to do. And I appreciated your support in that a couple of months back. I want to continue to make progress on those things in our community. And I hope to continue to have, not only your support and commitment to do better, our entire council's support and commitment to do better, but as a, to be a leader, an example of how those that we lead and those that we represent should also carry themselves. You know, I, I strongly feel that this was, once again, a missed mark. I think that the goal of myself and how I've understood of my colleagues was to remove Rebel. And I, I would be in support of removing that, keeping that removal tonight, but also removal of the Fajita Drive name. And I think the, it's been suggested many times, the simplest way would be to just take it back to 150. And I think that would be an appropriate step at this point. And I just want to reiterate kind of my comments from last week. And that, you know, I, I know it's a, it's a sensitive subject and a sensitive topic to talk about removing things from the past and, and, and different things and names and what have you and what we've seen across our country. But I want to share a really quick story. When I was first elected to city council, I was approached by a resident who took issue with our train depot. This resident stated that she wanted me to do something about the colored-only waiting room that's within the train depot. And I'd been to the train depot many times prior to this email and being on council. And I was very aware what this resident was referring to. And I thought long and hard about what they said, but then I responded that, you know, the train depot is paying homage to what it really was like in the 20s and 30s during that, that train station. And that what was, what you would find in a train station at that time would be a colored-only waiting room and white-only waiting room. And I explained to her my perspective and the way I was raised on appreciating education and history, that that is an appropriate place for it. It's a museum. It's a place to learn. It's a place to reflect on our, our history, good, bad, and indifferent. And sometimes, history is a little ugly, a lot ugly, sometimes downright, just shameful. But I think there are, there are certainly places for that. And I advocate for them being in museums and other places like, like, like our train depot. But, you know, there, there are opportunities. There have even been some great suggestions made tonight about people or groups or different things to honor with the road. This was a miss in our attempt to kind of claim something in Kyle's history. And, but it was, it was a missed mark. And I, I think the residents rightfully have expressed that to us. And I think this is, I commend the council for being willing to change our decision and, and, and listen to the residents and, and, because this is, this is, this is not, not, nothing small. And so, I just wanted to kind of share that because that's, that's how I kind of view these things. And once again, I appreciate the council's support and unanimous stance on, on the road. And certainly, and willing to certainly still have discussions. I've had so many great discussions this past week with various residents. I'm always willing to have these talks and conversations. I learn a whole lot from them and get a whole lot from them. So I appreciate that. And certainly, more than happy to talk with anyone who disagrees with my view and maybe has a different perspective about canceling and removing things. I don't necessarily see it as a cancel thing. I see it as a progress thing. A thing that we can move forward and show that we want to be inclusive of all. And if, being in a community with people of all different backgrounds is what we want. And to raise our children and be around areas of people of all different things that we can learn from, I think that's, that's a special thing. And that's what I've learned to learn and appreciate about Kyle. And I hope we can continue to make that progress there. And continue to not just have the discussions, but also take the even more difficult challenge of actually acting on those discussions and, and acting in the way that we talk about, that we want to see in our communities. At the end of the day, we have to, we have to do our part to step up and have the moral and ethical higher, high standard of ourselves as well, if we want the rest of the community to have it. So I think, I think, again, the residents for their time. I apologize sincerely about the. Um I apologize sincerely about the um the eh the offense. That the city felt like we were taking towards them and and it being a joke. I hope everyone understands that it was not that, but uh we had our part in the community not understanding that. Uh thank you for your time and uh as it was stated earlier, I can hope we uh can all. Learn from this and be better at what we're doing uh about this as well.
Mayor. Mayor Proton, I do have the others on. So if you wanna speak now, otherwise I was about to try to pull them up. You wanna go first or let them?
Oh, they they can go.
Okay, uh Jamie, are you there?
Can I get a quick confirmation that?
There you are, Jamie. Go ahead.
Good evening. Awesome. Okay, thanks, everyone. Um good evening, council. Um my name is Jamie Fulonwider and I've been a resident for Kyle for about twenty years. And a bit of part of watching our city trying to grow into its own shoes. And I think the uproar over Fajita Drive is a symptom of a bigger problem. As a resident, I'm starting to get a little bit of whiplash trying to explain what Kyle's identity is as a city. When we initially moved here, we were called Gateway to the Hill Country. Then we've proclaimed ourselves to be the pie capital of Texas. Even though we only have one pie shop. And now we're naming roads and structures Fajita Drive and Fajita Fields. I don't understand the fascination we have with identifying our city to food items. And I'm having a hard time understanding how pie and fajitas connect. So when I've asked past and current leadership, what is Kyle's identity? I was told the city's comprehensive plan provides our identity and and vision. The city's comprehensive plan is two hundred and seventy-one pages long. And in a world where communication mediums have fifteen seconds to catch your attention, a two hu- two hundred and seventy-one page plan is not gonna do the job. So this brings me to transparency and I'm going to use Fajita Fields as an example. If I had not gone through the city budget, I would have never heard of Fajita Fields, Fajita Fest, or Hops and Jalapenos. At least over the past, the previous few weeks. I then researched Fajita Fields and made the connections that to fund the creation of a Fajita Field means fourteen million dollars of funds. Will come from Hayes County or a Hayes County bond election. And another two million in funds will come from the City of Kyle bond election and both propositions will be on the November twenty twenty ballots. It's a twenty-four million taxpayer-funded entertainment event complex. That I can't find any documentation about what it looks like, what the long-term plan is, nothing. And this is doing a standard Google search on Fajita Fields, Kyle, Texas. And using Fajita Fields as a search term in the City of Kyle website. So where am I going with this? But what I'm asking council and leadership to do at this point going forward, and I think the weeks over this past. Uh the events over this past week will help support this. Is to gain a stronger awareness on the relationship between what transparency and clarity. So transparency relays information and clarity develops the understanding. And without clarity, any attempt at transparency leads to selective interpretation. Which means your message is not being understood, which means your citizens question your trust. So the perfect example for this is the proclamation that made last that was made last week. The item was on the agenda, but the agenda details did not artic- did not articulate the name council was putting forth for a vote. That is transparency, but without clarity. So we've all had a week to learn and regroup, so it's time to pivot and move forward. So let's move forward in the right way and let's start with these two recommendations or I'm gonna start with these two recommendations. So we've talked about rescinding the vote the vote on Fajita Drive tonight, which I think council is standing behind and and going to move forward with. And I think we should save the name for the area around the planned Fajita Fields where Mr. Falcone can be gallantly remembered. And the street size that we've already ordered can still be used in some shape or fashion. My second point, as indicated with a little with my discussion a little bit earlier, I think we as the City of Kyle need help with our branding. Citizens and outsiders need an easy to identify and understand message about what Kyle is as a city. Our vision as a city and the city's leadership mission to its residents. We need a brand every resident in Kyle can be proud of and I and an identity that we that can be carried on for generations. Kyle is too multifaceted to be branded as any food item. So my call to action for council is this. Find and hire a branding firm who can help develop and clarify a vision and mission for our city. A brand that all citizens in Kyle can get behind and be proud of wearing the same T-shirt. In conjunction, create a citizens committee to work with this branding firm so resident voices are heard. My feeling is if council can spend twenty-four million or actually ten million of taxpayer dollars along with Hayes's fourteen million contribution. On a festival field, I'm sure the city can fund can find funding to connect with a good PR branding firm to help set a direction or nor- or North Star. For what Kyle can be and allow this North Star to guide future decisions on various personas, be they streets, parks, or other amenities. This should be a priority before any further decisions are made, especially with the uptown area past the horizon. So in closing, I would like to share this quote. Many will continue to confuse transparency and clarity or value one over the over the other. Leaders who can make the distinction and know when each is called for will increase the momentum and value in reaching their goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh I also have a David Abdo.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Alright, in the interest of time, I had signed up for the citizen comment portion because I wanted to speak on two of the agenda items. I'm gonna try and squeeze it into just this three minutes rather than taking up a full six. My name is David Abdo and I'm a candidate for mayor of Kyle. I first wanna thank the council for their active contrition to begin this meeting. I appreciate y'all taking ownership of what I consider to be a grave mistake. In regard to the renaming of Rebel, what has transpired over the last week is yet another example. Of this council acting with unilateral authority and not speaking to be a representative body. I applaud the intention of honoring local history, but the execution calls into question the efficacy of this body. As a teacher of history locally, I am well versed in the need to identify and appreciate local exemplars of both community and culture. In doing so, the community itself must lead that conversation. In this case, they were ignored. Naming the road Fajita Drive and believing in any way that that calls forth the legacy of Mr. Falcone. Is akin to naming a road Union Boulevard and believing people will somehow honor Cesar Chavez. Now, to put out a statement that we're gonna simply call it one fifty begs the question. Of how committed to the cause of preserving local history this council was to begin with. It's like not getting to play the game that you wanna play so you take your ball and go home. This is not good governance. The will of the people should be consulted at every step of the way and heard before decisions are made. Not in a restorative measure like this meeting seems to be. This is damage control. Secondly, in regard to the budget, and I know this is off topic, but I wanna get this done in one shot. In the interest of time, I'm gonna focus on the glaring fallacy of tax relief in this budget. This council has trumpeted the fact. That they are decreasing property taxes for residents. This two cent saving on one hundred dollar value assessed. Means that a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home will save the resident only fifty dollars in a calendar year. The flip side of this. Is raising twenty-two and a half percent our water, wastewater, and waste service charges. Meaning, if your average bill is a hundred dollars a month for these services, in just two months. You'll make up that fifty dollars you saved on this false property tax relief and you'll be overpaying the next ten months. Meaning our cost of living is going up according to this budget. Now, during unprecedented financial crisis, when so many of our residents are losing work and struggling to keep up payments. And going into debt, it is disgraceful that we are going to raise any percent whatsoever cost of living. This clearly demonstrates that you all are out of touch with the constituents of this town. And unwilling to extend a much needed helping hand to your struggling neighbors. I cede my time.
Thank you, David. Um is that, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this uh on this item? That's I believe that's all I have for this item. Anyone at City Hall wish to come forward? Okay, uh I'm gonna go then if there are no objections, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh the public hearing is now closed. Mayor Proton.
Uh fellow council members, uh citizens of Kyle. Uh it's been a a hard week. It's been one uh of learning. It's been one of uh regret and remorse and uh. It's uh it's been eye-opening in in a lot of ways uh. When I when I first uh started serving Kyle on the uh Planning and Zoning Committee. Uh the first thing that I I did uh when I got appointed was I went to our library. And uh in our library, we have a room called the Heritage Room. And in that room is a little glass shelf full of books that are um. About Kyle and you can't even check them out uh because uh. There's not that many copies and I don't think you can replace them. And so you have to sit in there and you have to read. And and I did that because I knew that I wasn't from this town originally. I I didn't grow up here. Um but I do respect uh the history of a town. And I respect the history i- in general of towns. And uh I've spent uh a lot of my life uh writing stories uh about history. Uh particularly San Marcos, where I was in print media for uh fifteen years. And I can tell you all sorts of stories about San Marcos, but uh I had lived here for eight years. Um uh before uh getting involved in the city, so it took a long time to just really, you know. Wrap my mind around laying roots in the town. And uh I went to that library and I started reading this really big, thick uh blue book. Uh and I don't remember the name of it, but it was about the centennial celebration of Kyle from eighteen eighty to nineteen eighty. And I would read page after page to try to get the history to understand the city that I lived in. And and I bring that up because this Fajita Drive was not about making fun of Kyle at all. Uh it actually goes back to even some of the comments that Ms. Fulonwider made, where what is Kyle? How do I understand more about Kyle? And when you have great council members uh that you work with. Uh like Robert Rizzo and Alex Villalobos and Michael Tobias and Tracy Shield. And Dex Ellison and Mayor Mitchell. Uh I know that our hearts are in the right place uh to try to do the right thing for the citizens. And when we struggle with, you know, what the identity is or understanding something. Uh I lean on the council members that I know that have been here longer than I. And so um you know, I don't know who knows this or who's watching or who remembers, but. But uh Mr. Rizzo and I ran against each other uh when we got on council and now. Uh he is one of the best people I served with. I enjoy talking to to Robert all the time. Um and one of the reasons I really enjoy talking to Robert because Robert enjoys history like I enjoy history. And when he was telling me stories about um old school Kyle. And uh giving me information about how, you know, things used to be and celebrations. And uh happy moments in the city. And then he hits you with something like the Fajita uh was was basically birthed in this area. Uh that's a strong statement and that that means something. And I didn't believe him and I said in last week, I didn't believe when I was being told these things. And uh I spent a lot of time researching it because uh I. Didn't want us to celebrate something that wasn't true to Kyle, but I knew Robert was telling me that it was. And then when I found out and I came to terms that it was and and I got excited. And I got excited because I thought that's a beautiful nugget. That's a beautiful nugget of history that Kyle uh should hang his hat on. That it shouldn't be ignored and um the more I read about uh the Falcone family. And got to know about their contribution. Uh I was I was taken back and um I thought, there you go. There's something that's 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 part of the the fabric of Kyle. It's part of the identity. Um it's not all of it, but it's something and it should be commemorated uh com- uh celebrated. And uh you know cherished and and honored. Um and I definitely get the idea that uh the Fajita Drive uh was not uh the mark. That we needed to hit. Um but this council uh really bought in. To that piece of that history uh into the authenticity of of what we were seeing. And uh we definitely uh did lots of things that we think are uh. Good and honorable along that route and uh down to, you know, uh Fajita Fields, which is really just a sports complex. You know, that that name's not not official in any way. It's just something that we talk about amongst ourselves and and with staff and. You know, again, it's about parks and quality of life for our residents and places for them to go, but if we can. Um build something around future plans, soccer fields that have been planned long before I was sitting on council. And make them a place that people wanna gather and uh take it back to nineteen sixty-nine and cookouts and. And gathering and togetherness, uh that's something that 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 I would love uh to uh lend my support to. And to uh um represent the citizens of Kyle with a positive vote in that direction. Uh because uh the one thing I do know about Kyle is it's very community-based. And it desires to stay very community-based and focused and talked about and and have people uh spend time with each other. So um I I am fine with whatever name for uh that road that. Uh the citizens committees, uh anybody what's called, I think that uh you know. Um just like anything, you know, you you ask for something, you're gonna get a bunch of different opinions. I don't think there's necessarily a right answer, uh but I'm going to uh concede that uh you know. Uh Fajita Drive was the wrong answer for that, but um what I don't wanna do. Um and what I what I can't uh be okay with uh is ignoring history. And uh it's so important to to the culture of any town. That's where you you find out who you really are and um. I'm not saying this the only celebrity we gotta s- history gotta celebrate, but I think it is extremely important. That we honor our history and we honor the authentic history and we honor several facets of our history. Um so I do think that the Falcone family. Uh deserves some recognition and it doesn't have to be the word Fajita. I people suggested Fajita King. Uh or it can just be uh uh Mr. Falcone's name. Uh but I would love for us to be a community that shares that sort of thing with our visitors. That when they come to Kyle, they leave uh knowing a little bit something. About the town that they didn't they didn't know when they got here. Um something that 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 can create that sense of pride. I mean, uh Councilmember Rizzo. Always talks about he wants to live in a town that people are proud of and I agree with him wholeheartedly. I want to live in a town that people are proud of. Um and I know a lot of people are proud of this town, but that sentiment is it's our job to continue to do things. That help build on the history and the pride in the town and this is very much what was meant to happen. Um I got upset because uh partially this has been tied in with with Rebel. And um I took it uh as a slight towards uh Hispanic culture. And I don't think that's what it was. Um and I know people thought the opposite, that naming it Fajita was a slight towards Spanish cul- uh Hispanic culture. And that was definitely not the case. Uh that was not what was intended, but I do understand uh the perception. And I wanna apologize to anybody for thinking that was something that we were trying to do, cuz that couldn't be farther from the truth. Uh I wanna celebrate all our cultures. I wanna celebrate Kyle's culture. And Kyle's culture is a strong mix of people and I want us to celebrate it all. And so even with that, um back to um Councilmember Ellison's point. Um my vote will be for the overall celebrating of all cultures and being. Understanding and sympathetic. and being understanding and sympathetic to things that will not be looked favorably upon on some cultures. And just because I'm not the person that that's pointed at or that takes a lot of offense to certain things, I do recognize when something isn't equitable and it isn't, it is shrouded in something that is not good. So I do support changing the name of the road. I am open to anybody's suggestions and how they want to do it. It doesn't have to be 150 for me. It can be anything that the people think is good. But I just do want to say that I do love Kyle history. And I do think that this is a worthy piece of history. And I'm always going to thank Councilmember Rizzo and Councilmember Villalobos for bringing that to my attention because I have had a wonderful time looking that history up and getting to know more about that history. And I feel like that has shown me something of Kyle that I didn't know before. And I understand a lot of people didn't. And I just really hope that it is something that we celebrate moving forward in some form or fashion. Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Is there anyone who wishes to follow up before we consider which direction we want to go? Or does anyone have any questions for staff? Would you all like me to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I'd like to make a motion to appoint a committee to reach out to the citizens and to find an appropriate name change for Rebel Road.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved back to Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Villalobos that we appoint a committee to look into the name change of Rebel Road. Do you want to expound upon that further?
Definitely. I think at this point, we've all learned a lesson in that the citizens should make this choice. And I want to give them the opportunity to make the choice of the name change. And I want to emphasize that this will be citizens from Kyle that will reach out to our committee members and be able to voice what name they would like to see. And the committee will come back with the recommendations. I'm thinking maybe three and then find a creative way to allow the citizens to vote on those top three. And that's kind of what I'm proposing, Mayor.
Okay.
This is Councilman Tobias. I agree with that committee because there's a lot of factors that, again, we've got to play into this. Again, the number one thing is public opinion and also open, public hearing for discussions. This is a very controversial road, as we all know. It's been going on for years and I understand the need for it. We also have to look at the timeline of how urgent do we really need to have this road changed in the future? We also have to look at the financial burdens on the businesses and the residents. If there's a way where the committee, we can work with the city on to, if we have to get, and this is just me throwing it out there, some form of reimbursement or some form of way where we can work with them on this because this is going to be a big change. So I do like, support the recommendation that Councilman Rizzo has brought forward because of those various factors that we've got to look into. And it's very important. The step that I guess we would look is we would appoint a committee. We would have public input. They would have meetings and hearings as need be. And they could do the research. They could work with city staff. We could work with historians in the area. And then we can go from there. We can take it in steps. We can, again, like I said, look at the financial burdens that this might have for people. And then we can make a solid decision from there. But again, it's being transparent from the beginning and starting fresh and starting new and including people, especially the ones that matter the most, which is the citizens of Kyle. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, actually, thank you very much, Councilmember Tobias, because you just said some of the things I was going to say. First thing I do want to point out is that in a couple of years, we are going to have the 150 realignment. So we need to take that into consideration, exactly where that's going to be, where that starts, the road that actually enters Kyle and that whole name. Because what is now Fajita Drive, Rebel Drive, you know, part, the 150 from 2770 north, part of that will be a part of that road because 150 is just going to bypass it. So we need to take that into consideration. So while, yes, I am very much in favor of the committee, I think we do need to go ahead and have that timeline a little bit more spaced out just because it will allow for us to know exactly when that realignment's going to happen and where at that point, because last I heard, we still have a couple of options. I don't think they've even made the determination of the exact realignment yet. But also to give the businesses a little bit of time to get that money saved up and everything, knowing that that's going to happen. But while I say that, and I don't know the cost, and I wish I did, of how much it would actually cost a company to change their name with all the legal paperwork, all the letterhead. And I'm sure it's dependent on how, the size of the company too. But I would like to see something in, you know, I know we're pretty much at, well, we're at 1159 on the budget. So I don't know if we can find anything to help people now, but next year's budget. I think we need to maybe think about either helping the businesses rename, you know, be able to change all their legal paperwork and everything. But at this time, I still am very adamant that we need to go ahead and make that name change to just generic FM 150. Just we need to remove the Rebel name. And, but yes, I am in favor of the committee.
Absolutely. And that committee should comprise of a diverse group, business owners and property owners, landowners off of that area. And then also, you know, across the city as well. Just to make sure that we have representation across, to ensure that we're seeing everything and that we are addressing all of the different probabilities of expense and that we're making sure that we are receiving a full breadth of consideration with that committee.
I understand the importance of wanting to change it. But again, if we do that now, again, we're going to be going back, you know, next year, looking at this. These people will be affected now, whether we change it to 150 or we change it back to, or keep the, whatever the vote is. So we've got to be considerate of that. Because if we change it now, again, it's still a name change. It's still an address change. It's still somebody having to dig into their pockets, into their finances and have to make those changes along with the post office and so forth. So I think right now, we should just go ahead and I'd like to make a motion to rescind the vote that we're at. To make the motion to rescind the vote and keep where the Rebel Drive where we're at right now until we get this committee going. I understand the importance of it. I understand people want to change it. I understand that. But right now, financially, during this pandemic and with a lot of hardships going on, I don't think the people on that road have the finances to be able to change that and, of course, the public input on that. And so we have to be considerate about that. That's where I stand on that.
Okay, a couple of things. There's, from an ordinance standpoint, there's already a motion on the table to appoint a committee. So we'll need to address that first before we move on to the vote on the road. The second thing is that, yeah, if we reconsidering the item, the item was finally passed as Fajita Drive. So it's no longer Rebel Drive. So we would have to take affirmative action to rename it Rebel Drive, I believe. But Paige, you can chime in there if you'd like.
Mayor and council, Paige Sines, City Attorney for the Record. That is correct. It's the, there's currently an ordinance in place that's in effect, naming the road Fajita Drive. So if you want to change it back to Rebel Drive, that would require a motion and vote for that purpose. I'd like to just step back and make sure we've noted a couple of procedural items as well. The public hearing was closed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then we've moved on now to the action item on number five, to take action on these items. Okay. And then the motion on the table is the appointment of the committee. So that'd be the first piece of business to take up and then subsequent motions can be made after that.
Correct. Some thoughts about the committee. It would, you know, again, go about it however we want. We need to clarify and really define the committee that is being proposed. We can't just motion to make a committee. We have to say how many, how often, you know, and I know there's been discussion about that. But if we want parity east-west, north-south, racial, gender, however we want to set it up by district or all that, we'll just have to do, we'll need to set that up. And so there's a way, there's two ways to approach it. One is the way that's in a rush and one is the way that takes a little bit more time. My preference would be to take a little bit more time. But some of that might be dependent on whether or not the council has the will, whether it's the will of council to go back to a 150 vote, go back to Rebel Drive vote, leave Fajita Drive pending. So considering the discussion that's taken place, it might make more sense to take the vote on the road first and then take the vote on the committee. But that's, again, up to the council. But so far, the motion is, needs, it needs clarification. And there's nothing wrong with giving direction to staff or also there's nothing wrong with signaling and intent to bring back a proposal at a future council meeting and then allowing for us to have time to process the nature of what that committee might look like and how that task would be. I'm just personally not in a space where I'm, have, you know, can think through the various dynamics of the committee, including whether or not, I'm sure many would love to serve, how many and what that would look like, though, I still, I still don't know. So y'all can, we can do it however you want to do it. But if we are wanting to follow through with the motion and second that's on the table, we're going to need clarification as to what that committee needs to look like.
So Mayor, I think each council member could appoint a committee member and we could reach out to the Chamber of Commerce to appoint two member, business owners and make a committee of six plus two business owners. That way, we all represent a different part of the city. Actually, some of us are at large, but it would still be a diverse committee. And I believe that Chamber could help us with the two business owners that we'd like to serve.
So that would be up to just the Chamber to designate those two folks?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, so you set a committee of six. So you want the council to make appointments, not the mayor?
I'm sorry, committee of seven. Sorry, Mayor. I left you out. Sorry.
Councilmember Rizzo, out of respect, I had a different idea.
Okay, I'm hoping.
Let's go through the application process. Okay. Already, the idea that I came up with, or just in my head just now, was to have the city promote this in a communications, have a 14-day window, two weeks. If you're interested in serving on this committee, you put it out there, 14 days, okay? Get in the application, see who qualifies, set some parameters as far as meetings, schedules, dates and times. If some of those people are not able to do that, then they can withdraw their application in a sense. We can narrow it down. And then we can go from there as far as having a group of seven, in that sense, of applicants. It gives people a chance to give their input and also provides them a chance to serve their city, gives them a chance to see how local government works, lets them get more involved in the selection process. And who knows? That might help with voter turnout, in a sense, to where it's like, hey, I felt part of this process. And I think I want to continue with that, serving my community in those aspects. So you would get a selection committee going. You list some criterias, give it a 14-day window, make your selection. The committee gets formed. The committee then selects a chair, a vice chair. And we can set a timeline. We can say, hey, this committee starts up now, just like charter, just like the compensation. And say you've got six weeks to come up with a name or a recommendation for the council to vote. That gives plenty of time for residents to chime in, give their input. They can work with city staff on procedures, on how it works. And then by the end of that six weeks program, well, in that six weeks, they would have something ready for, to present council. And then we can go from there and decide yes or no, if that's appropriate or if that's a good nominee.
I do like your recommendation and will take mine back. But one thing I would like to emphasize is that anybody on this committee has to be a resident of the city of Kyle.
That could be in the procedures and the parameters. Well, not in.
And that's just to make sure that we.
Just make it real simple.
We bring in citizens from Kyle and that way it discourages outside influence of coming in trying to make this chaotic.
Because I look at it, as we continue to progress as a city, this could be a starting point, Mr. Mayor. This could be the beginning of something to where, when these topics come up again for another road that will eventually need to be renamed or added on, we can have something already in process and we can see if it worked or not. But we've got to try something to where we can involve more public input respectfully and work out a procedure to where we can develop from this and grow from this and evolve with this process. That's the way I look at it.
How do we create the selection of the applications, the selection committee?
Well, actually, this sounds like an ad hoc committee. So, I mean, our charter addresses ad hoc committees. So we would need to follow what the charter.
Exactly. According to the charter.
The charter states in regards to that. So I know we would have to have a staff member be the liaison or the kind of starting point for it and go from there. So Scott, your input at this point?
Mayor and council, City Manager Scott Sellers for the record. The City Council has a board and commission ordinance that stipulates the types of ad hoc committees that can be formed really for any reason that the council desires and council can determine the makeup and the selection parameters of that committee. So what you're deciding right now fits within that ordinance. We're happy to get the process started, put together those parameters. We can either bring it back to council for a collective review before we advertise or we can advertise immediately.
I'd like to, I'd like to. A direct view before it goes up?
Definitely.
Okay, we'll bring that back.
Thank you.
At the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Councilmember Rizzo, would you like to restate the motion to give staff direction to bring back the proposal as opposed to us establishing the committee now so that we can have the parameters in place?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to rescind my motion. And my new motion is to direct staff to create. create the parameters for the committee, and come back to council for review.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we give direction to staff to bring back parameters for a committee to be in charge of providing recommendation to us on the renaming of Rebel Drive. And is there any further discussion on the motion?
So do we still need to address the name of the road as well in a separate motion?
Yes.
Okay, so this is essentially to create a committee, or urge you direct staff on a process to create a committee to eventually rename 150?
Yes. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Does anybody want to make a motion on the road?
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to rescind the vote for Fahita, Fahita Drive.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Villalobos, that we rescind the vote for Fahita Drive. Is there any further discussion? Paige, can you tell us what that would do?
Yes.
Mayor and Council, Paige Sines for the record. What this motion would do, if successful, would result in the road going back to its prior name, which is Rebel Drive.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Is there any way that we could remove the Fahita Drive name, but not have it go back to Rebel?
You would have to either have the motion amended to include what the new name would be, or get through this motion and vote, and then propose a new motion with an interim name.
I just want to remember the, remind the council members that if we change the name to anything else, it's going to put a burden on the businesses right now, and the residents that live there. And I think it's council, I think council expressed that they wanted to give the businesses some time to adjust to this, so they wouldn't affect them right away financially.
I think that was the intent of the, the committee, formulated the committee so we can address that appropriately.
Yes.
So that we can understand the liabilities that come along with it, which is the cost to business owners. I think the idea is that we're doing it, we're bringing it back, and we're allowing the, the, the citizens to take charge of that. And we're commissioning them to be engaged, and I think it's important that we continue going forward to allow that process to happen as it's appropriate, and then we, we make the change. So.
I, I understand. Thank you, gentlemen. I would just say if there would be a option to, or a path forward to definitely rescind Fahita Drive, but not take it back to Rebel. As I stated, that was my goal from the beginning. That was my hope from the beginning, and that's what I had assumed the support of the council was as well. I definitely am sympathetic to businesses and any other property owners along that street of expenses. You know, and that's one of the things that we talked about in the last Tuesday's meeting, about the impacts there. So it's definitely a legitimate concern.
Paige, I have a question, and I don't know if you can answer it. I kind of wish now we had the postmaster here, even though I've heard that he's leaving. But if, because right now, I mean, yes, we have it named as Rebel Drive, but it's still FM 150, correct? So if we just took the Rebel name away and left it at FM 150, and say, it, it's still the same address, even if they, even if they use the Rebel name in their bus, in their legal filings, correct?
Yeah, this is a question I wouldn't be able to answer.
Yeah, I was afraid of that.
Yeah, if I understand correctly, you're, you're asking if we, is there some flexibility where, you know, we repeal this ordinance, it goes back to Rebel, or if we're trying to have a designation of FM 150, is that going to require people, businesses, to change their addresses, since those may be interchangeable to some extent? And, and I can't answer that question. That would be something we would need to reach out to the post office to see if that's a possibility. And just kind of one note on procedure, so that you, you know, the, the question about the procedure being, if you, this is a motion for reconsideration, if you rescind the ordinance that was adopted, then it will go back to Rebel, it'll go back to Rebel Drive, because that's what it was prior to this ordinance being in effect. If you want to rename it, then we would have to have an ordinance that does that renaming of the road.
I'm just assuming that that would also create the double expense, right? Because renaming it one thing, and then later on, changing it again, assuming that the committee comes back with another name. So I would assume that we would just leave it as is at this point, allow the committee to do their work, and bring it back. Do you want to, you got something?
Just as a point of clarification, if you, if we had had the comments done at number one, and the public hearing two, and then taking comments now, we could resolve this, but may I make a comment?
If, we don't, we don't have a public hearing at this point, but I could ask, we could do like a point of reference and call somebody up front, right? We could, we could do it that way, without having a public comment?
You can, you can ask anyone to come forward and speak if you, if you would like, Councilmember Villalobos.
So my thought is, is that the heart of the council is, is that they don't want the Rebel name to be attached to the city. I, I think that the statement can be made by each of you. I think that the, the, the community understands that. That's part of the intent that was being done. I don't think we question that. The, the problem with trying to take it off now, appoint a committee, and then change it again later, is you're going to create a double burden on the citizens that you, at the same time, you're trying to say, hey, look, it's our heart not to offend anybody with the Rebel name. And I think Mr. Ellison, that's part of hi, his statement is, the Rebel name can be taken as offensive by some, some. I, I, I don't believe that by rescinding the prior ordinance, reinstating Rebel, with the statement that it is y'all's clear intent, it is y'all's clear heart, to take that off at some point in time, that's the purpose of the committee, that anybody's going to be offended by that. And so I, I would encourage you guys to consider, that is an option, is that each of you take an opportunity to explain that that is not your intent is to reinstate Rebel, and that you're going to keep it. Your intent is to reinstate it, leave it for the, just maintain the status quo, so that you can then go forward and appoint this committee, research options, and then go forward from there.
Correct. And that, that was, that's the concern I brought up, Mr. Pastrana, is that I didn't want to change it and then change it again, and that changes the actual address in and of itself, so it creates a, an additional burden, so.
Mayor and Council, if I may. Sorry, City Manager Scott Sellers for the record. Because Rebel Drive was originally set by ordinance to remove that name, or to change that name would require another ordinance, which is why Fahita Drive was brought forward by ordinance on two readings, but both passed the same evening. By rescinding the ordinance for Fahita Drive, it still leaves Rebel Drive set by ordinance, which means that to remove that name or to change it would require an ordinance with two more readings. So this decision to rescind does take it back to Rebel. A name change at this point would require a second ordinance. The response to Councilmember Shield, many PO box holders will address their PO box either by number or by street address. There are many businesses that list 555 Rebel Drive number X as, as their business identity. But there are many others that just list a PO box number. So we will have to work with the postmaster to understand which ones are addressed, and maybe they don't even know. Our, our goal was to be, to send a, some sort of a buck slip, or some sort of notification to all the 2,000-plus PO box owners at this post office of the name change, and then let them make the determination on how they want to amend their address accordingly.
I just wish there was some way we could at least, you know, let the business owners and, you know, such, be able to still keep the Rebel Drive name, but change the signs to FM 150. In the interim, but I don't think we can do that. Also, it'd be confusion for the businesses when they say they're Rebel Drive, and somebody's looking for their business, so.
So at the end of the day, we, we rescind it, it returns back to its original name. And we commission it with the statement that it is changing within the time period that we allot for the committee to come back with recommendations.
That'd be correct.
That's it.
Certainly, thank you, and I, I appreciate that. And that, that has been my understanding of all of this. I was trying to, you know, it's, it's, I haven't done a great job of articulating that this is not about an offense, or anything like that. Certainly don't want to offend the community, or upset the community, and I definitely want the community have, to have input. So I would not be an obstacle to that. And so I would be supportive of rescinding and changing the name back.
Any other comments?
I would just like to maybe amend the motion, because I, I don't remember the exact motion, and I'm sorry about that, but to send the name until the ad hoc committee can, and the council can determine a different name for Rebel Drive.
It, it doesn't work that way. I mean, for all we know, the committee could come back and recommend that we keep Rebel Drive, so.
Okay, fair enough.
I will not, I will not be voting to rename this Rebel Drive, and it has nothing to do with Fahita Drive.
I understand.
So if it was up to me, we'd bring back a committee at the appropriate time to potentially rename the road, if that is the desire, but the, the reason for this action and the consternation associated with it, outside of my own misgivings and, or, or intentions, or good, well-inten, good intentions, but poor execution is the desire to remove Rebel Drive. I, if, I appreciate public input, and certainly committees being formed is a way for public input to, to be gathered. I have heard, as I said, maybe 100 different folks with their represent, with their ideas for what the name should be. I don't think it's very wise to put a committee together without first divorcing Rebel Drive from it, because the truth is, if we were going to name a street, it should be done in the same way that we just, that we're considering naming the pool, meaning separate and divorced from the controversy that can drag it down. I think the connection to Rebel Drive is, and the decision to name it Fahita Drive is two, several mistakes that have caused a, a lot of pain and anguish to the family of, and descendants of Sunny Falcone, so I would rather name it RM 150, and then take a collective break on the topic, accomplishing one task that I think the community supports, and then allow the renaming to happen more organically down the road when, when the time comes. There's no pressure to give it a name right now, at all. The pressure and the desire is to remove the name, and I will not cast a vote that allows for it to be by ordinance reinstated as Rebel Drive. Anyway, I understand the thought, so. I know that's, what's being said, is that there is the desire and a hope that a committee could be formed, that'll come and give us a really great name that the whole community will support. We'll see. So those are my comments. Any other comments?
Yes, Mayor. I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I think we're making the same mistake. By assuming and taking the lead and calling it something else without allowing the citizens to take the lead on that, all we're doing is replacing it with a different name, which still creates the expense to those individuals affected.
I'm aware. I understand.
Okay.
I, I, I think that renaming it from Rebel to RM 150 and the associated expenses, however we can assist businesses, I've gone through some address changes as a small business owner as well, so I'm familiar with that process. I, I understand. I wouldn't rename RM 150 afterwards for any, at, anytime, you know, this year, next, I don't know. I'm just not saying that we have to immediately jump to giving it a new name, a new city designation. I think the state designation is fine, but primarily, it's because it accomplishes the prime directive, which is to remove Rebel Drive. And there are quite a few folks in town who do not want that to happen. They don't want to remove Rebel Drive, they don't think it's necessary, and, and I respect everyone's opinion. So, but for me, for myself, for my vote, I, I can't, I can't cast a vote to reinstate Rebel Drive, just can't do it. So. If nobody else has anything to, to say, we'll do a, we'll do a roll call vote on it.
Well, I, I do, because I'm, I'm a little confused by the 150 Rebel Drive back and forth. I know it is FM 150 or RM 150, because there are signs on that stretch of road, the Brooks Crossing sign that says 150. I know that the intersection of 2770 says 150, really big on there, so I, I'm just not quite certain on how they are different, or how calling it 150, when it still is 150, is, is changing the name. So, I don't know, I'd love some clarification on that page, because there are multiple spots on that stretch of road within what was known as Rebel Drive that still say 150 there. And some of my question, because I was wondering why they didn't say Rebel, and they said 150, when it was clearly within that, that space.
The, the answer that I can give is that we don't, we don't know. We don't have enough information. The issue is, if the council were to take action, which you would have to bring back a document to do that, to change the road from Rebel to 150, then we don't know what the impacts on people receiving their mail would be, or if there's a requirement that they update any kind of official, other official documents that may be filed elsewhere to give notice that there's an address change. We just, we don't have enough information to know what the impact on people who have to receive mail based on that address would be.
Didn't just three years ago, we had to change Go Forth to Philomena? There were several businesses that were impacted there as well. So do we know what the impact was for them?
Every business was different. There were a few that would, that had no real financial impact. Majority of, the change address forms they needed to do were with the post office, and, you know, sometimes point-of-sale machines have to be reprogrammed. There are times when businesses may have the address put on their facilities with, you know, per-minute signage. I don't know of any that are that way. I don't know of any that are that way. It's really just a handful of them and, and so it's, it's more cumbersome than it is expensive unless it is a very specific type of business that has, has just a lot of stationary or letterhead. That's generally not the case these days, but it's not very expensive to replace it. I would say the amount of money that I had to spend to change the name or, and the address of my, my business, which I've had to do before, was less than $100 all in total. But that's not nothing. I'm not saying that. But I was willing to change the name because I, because I felt like that it was appropriate a week ago. I'm still willing to change the name from Rebel Drive. So I don't see that we have to make it two names. I don't see we have to rush to rename, but I do think that the time is now to remove Rebel Drive and I don't need to be told that. That's something that I believe that the community has weighed in on and for myself, I'm very comfortable making a vote to remove Rebel Drive, even if the, the proposed replacement was not well-accepted, so. We don't have to keep going, going through it. I don't know if someone puts in 5555, 150, you know, I don't know if that would get to the post office or if they have to put in Rebel Drive in order for the address to go. It is a state highway, so the state highway does have the 150 designation overlaying it. My gut tells me that if you called it RM 150 and replaced the signs, they would continue to get address at both one, their 150 address and their Rebel address for, for a very long time. Postmasters generally are pretty good at delivering and understanding some of those situations and so, anyway.
If I could offer maybe a, if I can offer maybe a recommendation or a suggestion would be to, we could bring back an ordinance to remove the name Rebel Drive, but yet delay the implementation of that removal. In much the same way, if Fajita Drive was, was voted on this last week, we delayed the implementation of that pending this conversation. Implementation would require, again, notification as, not only to the residents, the business owners, but to postmaster, different search engines, mapping services. So the implementation is something that we could wait on until after the committee gave their, their input, but yet in practice, it would still be Rebel, but the vote could take place immediately. When I say immediately, as soon as we could bring an ordinance forward. Just to remove the name.
The name and make it 150.
And that would create the ease for the business owners on there with regards to the address and so on and so forth until we come back with the committee?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we would have to change that motion to that? We would have to restate the motion?
Well, again, I'm going to look to our city attorney, but I believe that there is no way to remove the name Rebel Drive but by ordinance, which is not on the agenda tonight, unless, unless it could be done under this item to reconsider.
Yeah, it absolutely can because the, the way that we have set it up is there's an ordinance attached to the item that we're reconsidering. If we vote on a new name, I would have to think that that vote would go in as an ordinance. Now, it would have to come back for a second reading, but it's, it's, we can, we have the ordinance attached to the agenda to name it whatever we want to name it. Am I wrong, Paige? You're muted, sorry.
Your rules of counsel open up the discussion for, for, for more action than, for full discussion on what the item is, but we, I don't, I don't see that document attached as my one comment on it. I don't have it, it's, it's not attached there, so. If you give direction to bring the ordinance back and you pass it on second reading unanimously, then that would address the issue. You've got to bring it back anyway.
Well, I don't know that we have unanimous anything right now, so I'm not sure what the unanimously implies. Scott, would you like to elaborate a little bit more on your proposal? It sounded like there might have been a way for us to accomplish all of what we want, but I was not clear on the mechanics of what you're suggesting.
Yep, Mayor and Council. Scott Sellers, again, for the record. What I would propose is that if, if legal is open to this tonight to have a first reading to rescind or basically to remove the name Rebel Drive, which would in effect leave the road named West RM 150, the implementation of, of the removal of Rebel Drive would be the next action that staff would take, which would require a number or a series of notifications. We would delay the implementation of the vote until after the committee could come back with a new recommended name to the council. Council could approve that by ordinance and then we would implement that action at that time. So technically, the name is, is not Rebel until the committee comes back with a new name. However, in practice, the street signs will still be Rebel Drive, the P O boxes will still be Rebel, nothing will have changed for the businesses.
And they'll bring it back with the recommendations, so I think that's, that's it. So how would we formulate that in a, in a proposal, in a, in a?
In a motion? The motion just, the motion is to remove the name Rebel Drive and direct staff to postpone action on its implementation.
Should I make that motion now?
We, we have to get Michael to rescind his original if we were going to do that.
I just want to clarify one thing. Have we made, have we voted on the motion to remove Fajita? Have we voted on that yet?
Yeah, we just did before, prior to this.
Okay, I just, I'm trying to, I'm sorry, I think my brain is fried.
No. So the way the reconsideration happens is when we initially make a motion to reconsider, it basically starts the clock back. So now the item is back before us. So if we took no action, it would stay Fajita Drive. If we rescind the ordinance, it goes to Rebel Drive. If there's some middle ground here that's being proposed for removing Rebel Drive but delaying action, that could be a, a middle ground that would give us time to, to form a committee and let them make the name choice. So that's all fine, just so long as when we are moving through this, it is, you know, tomorrow, it is not reinstated as Rebel Drive. It is allowed to persist as Rebel Drive, but Rebel Drive is no longer the actual official, official designation. We're just buying ourselves time for a committee to name, name the road instead of us.
Absolutely.
So just to make it clear, the street names will still say Rebel Drive if this goes through and it's just Rebel Drive would be a phantom name on the ordinance?
We're delaying implementation.
Delaying until the committee is formed, until they make the recommendation.
Correct.
To make it clear for everybody.
Honesty, yeah, honestly, if you want to do a delayed, if you want to buy time but still have that initial action and do that separation from Rebel so that Rebel's not on the table when the committee makes their decision, I think that's, you know, I'm getting it now. I think that's a great proposal.
Good point, yes.
So thank you for that, Scott.
Paige, Councilmember?
So all the motions?
Go ahead.
Paige, Councilmember Rizzo, so I'm just trying to understand the steps here that we're going to take, because right now, we're still at Fajita Drive.
I, I don't believe you voted on the rescinding the ordinance.
No.
Okay, so that, that, okay, so that would need to happen in order to, in order for Fajita Drive to go away. The prior procedural question that I was looking at, which is can we vote to do away with the name of Rebel Drive? You have it posted on the agenda for action on renaming Rebel Drive and your rules of council say that when you do a motion for reconsideration, you're not bound to just reconsidering the prior, the prior vote. You, you can consider the full agenda item and take action on the full agenda item. So that means that number, you have, you could implement the proposed plan that is in front of you, which is number one, rescinding Fajita Drive, rescinding that ordinance and getting rid of that name and then taking the first vote on, on removing the Rebel name. You'd have to come back with second reading on an ordinance to complete that. And then if as part of that motion, you direct staff to delay the implementation as laid out by the city manager, then that would be put into effect as well.
Paige?
Yes.
If it's 7-0 tonight to remove the name Rebel Drive, does that pass as if it were second reading?
I think we should bring back the document since we don't have it here in front of us. We should just bring it back for second reading. You've got a meeting on the first, can be done fairly quickly.
Okay. So now, now it's just a matter of, of ensuring that we're making the motion appropriately so that we're in the right direction, so let's, let's clarify that one more time.
Paige, do we actually have the motion still on the table or are we all in agreement that there's no motion on the table to give us a chance to make one more motion?
The, what I recall is you still have a motion on the table to rescind the ordinance, naming the Rebel Drive Fajita Drive. And so that either needs to be removed or acted upon and then another motion taken.
Okay, well, as that's stated, I, I wouldn't vote for it. So if the desire is to get it set up where we can all be in agreement on it, I, I think you can accomplish the same thing through a different, a different form of the motion, basically just bringing it all together into one comprehensive motion that Paige can, Paige can give the language on. She can state it and then we can agree with that in a motion. Either way, it's up to y'all.
I think we can do it in two separate motions and keep the rescinding. That way, everybody hears that we have rescinded the Fajita name and then we can go with another motion for the, the rest of it.
We just have to take the vote on the rescinding.
All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six to one. You want to make the next motion?
I would like to make a motion to rename, to set aside or set up an ordinance to rename Rebel Drive to FM 150 or RM 150 and then delay that until another name can be proposed by the ad hoc committee.
So we're delaying the implementation of that, so it won't change until we get back to them.
So Paige, do we, does it affect it by FM 150?
Yeah, hang, hang on, hang on, hang on. We have, we have a motion on the table. We have to, we have to consider the motion before we ask more questions. So I think I heard a second in the middle of all that, but I wasn't sure who made it.
A second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember, it's moved by Councilmember Shield, it's been seconded by Councilmember Tobias that we remove Rebel Drive and delay the implementation of renaming the street until such a time as the committee has brought back their recommendation. Is that adequate?
She, so Councilmember Shield added, naming it FM 150 temporarily, I, I don't think that's what our goal was.
Yeah. Officially, it's RM, West RM.
Okay, so we're good? Okay, I was just asking a question.
That's, that's the current name.
All right, sounds good. I'm good, Mayor.
And I, I think the, kind of the nuance is it's just removing that name since it is RM 150, so you're removing the Rebel Drive name.
Yeah, it is currently, it is RM 150. It even, like, like Mayor Protemus saying, one of the street signs within that corridor already says RM 150. That's because that's the state designation. So if we remove Rebel and don't assign anything else, whether we say it goes to RM 150 or not, that's what it would be. You can't just, you can't take the designation completely away. So the state, state designation will prevail, but what, what everyone is trying to say, what I heard the motion, in the motion, is that we will, we will delay changing signs and telling folks to change their addresses and things like that until such a time as we can bring back a committed response. Is that right, Paige? Does that sound right?
That is what I heard and that is what the motion.
So, so practically, the impact is that if upon passage, the vote does not go, Rebel Drive goes from, or removing Rebel Drive goes from first reading to second reading, which will be brought back on September 1st, and assuming that passes, there would be no impact to the property owners until such a time as the, the item is brought back and given a new name.
Correct.
All right, that works for me. I think that's a great, I think that's a great way of handling this, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Before we move on to our other items, I'd like to propose a 11-minute break. We'll reconvene at 10 o'clock.
Are we doing item number three and six together or are we doing the public hearing?
Those are the?
We doing number three?
The, the public hearing.
Okay. We're going to conduct a public hearing on city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 as amended by city council on August 1st, 2020, totaling approximately 134.2 million for all city funds, including a tax rate of 0.5201 per $100 assessed valuation, a 10% increase in water service rates, a 10% increase in wastewater service rates, no change in storm drainage fees, a 2%, 2.5% increase in solid waste service charge, Lmetz trash collection per contract terms, limited changes in other fees and chain, and charges, and the addition of 22 new full-time positions for a total of 279 full-time equivalent positions.
Okay, thank you. I think we have one person registered to speak. I'm not sure which, what the, the name is. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, it's, yes, it's Lila Knight.
Go ahead, Lila. Yes, go ahead, Lila.
All right. My name is Lila Knight and as we all know, we are still in the pandemic. Many people have lost their jobs and our businesses are struggling. I'm very disappointed in the council's review of this budget. I'm hoping that tonight we can see a more robust discussion on what the budget contains. You have done very little to make cuts or postpone spending in the budget. There are so many possibilities you could have considered and I certainly can't address them in a mere three minutes. That is one example. You're spending the $2.7 million settlement from the Kinder Morgan Pipeline on amenities in Uptown Slum Creek, but there is nothing in the budget for the future protection of people and property located near the pipeline. Do y'all have like an emergency plan in place in case there's an accident? Isn't that something we should have? Not going to say that, that's me. Also, my neighbor Alfred Zambrano requested I add his comment, which is, quote, "I do not agree with spending tax money on pet projects that are completely toned down, especially since we are deep in debt as city projects continue to go well past their contract dates and projected budgets," unquote. Good luck. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. I believe Mr. Partridge also wishes to make a comment. Mr. Partridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm here once again. My name is Peter Partridge. I'm candidate for mayor, representing many city residents in Kyle. They have many concerns on the budget. Basically, I have about 10 people that are going through the budget and saying, hey, look at this, look at that. I don't have time to give it all to you, but just as you, as a, this is off the city website.[1800.47] I don't have time to give it all to you, but just as you, as a, this is off the city website, and they haven't even finished. Basically, I'm just going to read through the quick notes that I have. So the tax rate, I think we can all agree. We're sitting about mid-range right now for our area comparing to other cities in the area. We're sort of kind of in the middle for a tax rate, which is a good thing. But if we lower the tax rate even more, basically, people are concerned we're going to have the same thing that's been happening every year, whereby our property values go up, and even though the rate goes down, we're still out more money from our pocket every year. It's an economic lever, leverage tool, and it does it every time. If you go back over the years, you'll see that I'm telling the truth here. Okay? One thing we're curious about, we don't see any funds allotted for the present KPD building this year for maintenance. Just curious, usually we see it, this year we didn't. Okay, I covered that. Okay, on page 161 of the budget, there's the Fahita Festival, amount of $130,000 allotted. So we're kind of curious how, for something that doesn't exist yet, how we are managing to allot money to it. And then on another page of the budget, I have it here, but I'm not going to waste time going through it. There's $875,000 allotted to Fahita Fields. Once again, a park that doesn't exist yet. The $2.7 million, I believe Ms. Knight has already mentioned that one. Few words on the bond. Right now, most of the people I'm talking to aren't going to vote for it, not because they don't like KB, or KPD, but because there's no informational, information available to us in the form of the actual documents. We can't see what we're voting for, and that is included in bond payments, et cetera, in the budget, but we have no information. So what I'd like to do this evening is ask, I know you're supposed to act on this item tonight. If you could postpone your voting on accepting, it would be very appreciated by all. Give us the public a chance to see what it is y'all are voting on. Look at some of the discrepancies, and give us a chance to see what the proposal A is about. One of the big things, $37 million is a lot of money. This is supposed to go to KPD. However, in the budget, only $15 million of that is allotted to KPD for the building. We would like an explanation. We'd like to see documents. We would like your cooperation. Please hold off the vote for another day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing none, if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Mr. Sellers, go ahead.
Mayor, I have nothing for the public hearing.
That's right. Okay. Well, I closed the public hearing, so we'll need to bring up the item. Tracy, would you mind? Councilmember Shield, would you mind reading the item?
All right, for number six, second reading. A proven ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, adopting budget totaling $134.2 million for all city funds for the ensuing fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, appropriating revenue and expenditure amounts thereof for all city funds, authorizing a 10% increase in water service rates, a 10% increase in wastewater service rates, no change in storm drainage fees, a 2.5% increase in solid waste service charges, all other fees and charges for city services as provided for in the fee schedule, capital improvement program expenditures, addition of 22 new full-time positions for a total of 279 full-time equivalent positions, carryover of encumbrances, all associated schedules and documents, and repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers, go ahead.
All right, Mayor, Council, Scott Sellers for the record. This is the second and final reading of the budget tonight, budget tax rate. This is your opportunity to make any concluding revisions to the budget, assuming you might have some. And I'm here with Perves Mohit, Andy Alejandro from the city's finance department. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I think, I think it's good, before we move on to any point, I mean, there was a point of question on that. And if we could explain the reason for the earmarking of the dollars for both the property and then also for the festivities that are coming in, and on how that was designated and why, I would appreciate it.
Would that be for Rebel?
No.
I'm sorry, for Fahita Fields?
Yeah, for the festival in and of itself, because I know that there were some savings because we didn't have a festival. We earmarked it in case that we did have at some point the opportunity to have something. Not that anything has been planned at this point, right?
Yeah. So earlier this year in February, the council in its retreat determined to have a second city festival, one that would honor the city's heritage and culture. During the progression of the year, it was determined that some sort of a festival and Fahita Festival was brought up as a potential name for a heritage festival would be added to the budget. So during our budget workshops, we did talk about creating an additional line item for a second festival that would occur probably sometime in the spring. We were thinking March timeframe for, again, this cultural or heritage festival. It has not officially been named. But again, because Fahita had been discussed several times, it was a name that was kind of caught on in the workshop, but has not been officially adopted by the council at this point. Not to say that it won't be the name, it just hasn't been official yet. The Fields, really kind of in the same vein. We needed a location to hold that event. In the Park Development Fund, which is a separate fund paid for by developer fees, parkland development fees by developers. We have had multiple projects budgeted throughout the years, depending on the next anticipated large parks project. Some of those have occurred, some of those have not. It is a fund outside of the city's general fund, meaning it is not taxpayer-funded. Again, it is development fee-funded. And in this case, because of the, you know, the nature that projects within this fund are basically capitalized, they become capital projects that are rebudgeted year over year, depending on how they're expended. And they're usually for large park development projects, hence the name. So in this case, it is a fairly significant dollar amount for property acquisition for this field complex. And at this point, again, more information is still to come on the actual acquisition of that property. Part of the reason that the conversation about the funding piece has not been more forthright is because we're still working on acquiring said property with the developer. And property acquisition, those conversations are typically long, complex, and confidential. And so we are not yet finalized with obviously acquiring that property. The money is in the budget in anticipation of finalizing those conversations. But conversations with the developer continue to this day. So as soon as we ultimately finalize those conversations, the budget is approved with monies that we can expend on that property, then we can bring that forward and really make more of a public statement of where that is and what it will be.
And I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. I know that certain allocations of funds, especially those can only be used for that intended purpose, it can't be used for other things. You can't pull it out and put it into the general fund and expend it as if those were taxpayer dollars, right?
Yeah, the way this fund works is developers typically have to add a certain amount of park space within their own developments. However, if the Parks Board determines that that area is already served by a public park, or the, maybe there's a much larger amenity that should be built elsewhere, and they can be served by a small park, then those additional funds are placed in this Park Development Fund for parks purposes. And it does, it is restricted for parks purposes. You're exactly right.
And again, just for further clarification on the generally planned event that we're talking about, I know that we didn't expend the dollars on the, on the.
Pie in the Sky.
Pie in the Sky Festival. So we're utilizing funds from there, holding on to them down. Because we didn't expend them this fiscal, this fiscal year, then.
Yes and no. There are additional funds in the budget for the cultural festival, whether it is called the Fahita Festival or whatever the name is. There are funds for that festival. There are so, there are also funds for Pie in the Sky. And you're correct, this current fiscal year, we will not be expending those funds, a very, very small portion of that. So those monies, which are also restricted, they will stay in that restricted fund for those events in the future.
Thank you.
Scott, this is Councilman Tobias for the record. Going back to the percentages of increase, what was the whole reasoning, again, on, just for clarification, the 10% increase in the water service rates and the wastewater service rates going up, and the 2.5 in the solid waste? The reason why they're at that rate, they're going up that much?
I'm going to try to be as succinct as I can. That is a very long response. The short answer, though, is we had been, have been budgeting for years in anticipating several large expenditures. The driver in the water utility is the Alliance Regional Water Authority line. And that is a 60-mile, I think 60-inch diameter trunk line to bring water to this area. That comes with a very hefty price tag that we, again, have been anticipating for many years, basically since Alliance Regional Water Authority was implemented. We knew this expenditure would come. We had been planning on a series of debt issuances, but that Alliance Regional would authorize, under their debt capacity, their debt authority and not ours. We are taking a 10% increase in the budget to pay for defeating or the debt service for that project. So that's the water. We started, I believe, with a $2 million small project that was back in 20, I want to say 2017, between Kyle and Buda. And then we had several large tranches that we had to pay our pro rata share with all the different partners in the authority. And this year, yeah, those, you know, I believe it was the final payment for, that was anticipated. So we shouldn't have any additional payments for Alliance Regional Water beyond this year. But to help cover that cost, it required a 10% increase in the water fund. On the wastewater fund, again, we had been planning for, I believe, since 2015, when we settled the lawsuit that we had at the time and became owners of the current wastewater treatment plant. We began in earnest to design, upgrade the capacity, the treatment capacity for the new wastewater treatment plant. And so we saw a presentation on it earlier. We saw, you know, the mayor talked about it today in the state of the city. It's a very expensive project to add such large capacity to our wastewater capacity. And so in our anticipation, we tried to absorb, in this last budget, we absorbed the hefty rate increase for the project with the understanding that this year we were going to have to raise the rates to cover that cost. And I'm going to look at Perves, I could be exactly opposite. Did we absorb ARWA? We absorbed one of the two. Apologize, it may have been ARWA.
I can add to that if you'd like.
Yeah, Perves can jump in there. I'm going to hit the last thought here, and then Perves is going to clarify, because I think I may have just got the two switched. The TDS rate is by contract, and so every year we have a certain amount that we pay them. We can call it an inflationary escalator that we have per contract. It used to be more, and we brought it down in our latest round of negotiations. But that is by contract. Each year we'll have an increase. Perves, please.
So Mayor, Council, for the record, I'm Perves Mohit, city's director of finance. Let's go back to the water utility first. Primarily, the rate increase is, as the city manager explained, is for the ARWA debt. City of Kyle's share is $82 million. Of that, the ARWA has already issued $36.7 million that we're paying debt service for a number of years now, and we've been able to absorb it. They're planning to issue $34.5 million late this fall, sometime November, early December, and another $10.7 million in November of 2021. And that's just for City of Kyle's share. So when you add all those up, that's $82 million. All along, we've had a three-year rate increase plan for the water utility. And we've been including this in our budget presentations annually, as far back as 2014, 2015. We've been giving council heads up that this is coming our way. We've been minimizing the rate increases to the extent feasible and possible. The last rate increase for water utility system was in 2013. Now we're at a point that the water utility cannot sustain the debt service that is going to be required for us to cover each year for our portion. When everything is said and done, that's $4.2 million in debt service. So far, the debt service is $1.8 million for the debt that we've already issued, not including what's going to get issued in November. So the 10%, we had planned a 10% rate increase last budget. If you recall, council was able to use some general fund dollars to defer that or postpone that. Year number two now has been shifted by that deferment. So we're back to year one. Anytime you do not increase the rates, it has a compounding effect because it's not a one-time impact. It's recurring impact each year from that point forward. So but by not doing a 10% rate increase last year, we're back to square one needing that money in the coming fiscal year. So this 10% is part of a three-year rate increase plan. So there'll be our projections at this point is 10% in the coming year, 10% in the year after that. And depending on the growth of the system, meaning the number of customers and how much water we sell, and what the water portfolio is going to cost, there might be another 8% to 10% in year number three after that. So that's on the water utility side. On the wastewater side, if you'll recall, we just issued in June $29 million of contractual obligation bonds for the plant expansion. That was planned also for quite a number of years. In 2019, council approved a 10% rate increase. We had a 20% rate increase projected, and we divided that over, or spread it over two years. So the first 10% was implemented in 2019. The second 10% was forecasted for 2021. So this is that remaining 10% that. forecasted for 2021. So this is that remaining 10% that we need to cover the gap in the wastewater utility. The future rate increases for the wastewater utility is going to depend on additional expansions or additions to the treatment plant, because this expansion is going to give us up to only four and a half MGD. And we know that on the heels of that four and a half MGD, we're going to have to increase the capacity. So there might be some increases in the future. But in, for the right now, this is the last 10% of the two-year rate increase on the wastewater system.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I think there was some questions that came up on my end from my constituents. Why is it going up? And thank you for clarifying that, because it's just pretty much the more usage we have, the more people that are, that are coming here, it's going to increase our, our need for more water and wastewater. So it's just, but it's, but I'm glad that I had some kind of clarity as far as, you know, this is something that's been planned before. And you're predicting possibly next year, we might have another increase?
On the water system.
On the water system. So people can start kind of not prepare for it, but just expect to see maybe some rates going up next year on next budget.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Count, Mayor Council, as our last meeting, I stated, we, we were looking at giving the employees a 2% increase, and we were excluding our department heads. And, and I wanted to bring something forward to try to give our department heads a, a pay raise. And one reason was that I, I think during this entire pandemic, we, our department heads had to be creative. They had to learn to work remotely. They probably had to, uh, put in longer hours, knowing that we were going through a pandemic. I, I remember seeing many department heads out in, in the field, moving many of the hand sanitizers, helping up with barriers. Our own city manager as well was out there. And I want to thank you, Scott, for being out there and, and, and doing all we could to try to protect our citizens, whether it was putting up the barriers around the playscapes and everything else that went along with it. I, I've got to remind everyone that when this pandemic hit, we had no clue, no idea of how to react to it. But our city staff and council did the best they could to react to something that no one had a clue of how it would affect us as a community, as a city, or as a state. And I, I wanted to do something to say thank you to our, our department heads as well, because we, we are giving our staff, most of the employees in the City of Kyle a raise, a 2% raise. And it's, I know it's not a lot, but it, it's something to say thank you, because they also stepped up. They were out there working just as hard, working in trail systems, working the parks, doing all they could, you know, for the citizens of Kyle. One thing I didn't want to see was our pay, our, our tax rate go up. So I wanted to get creative and, and try to find a way to accomplish this goal without putting a burden, further burden on the taxpayers. And I, I reached out to our city manager, Scott Sellers, to help me try to find somewhere we could find the funds to be able to accomplish this. And thankfully, we were able to do that. And we got the confirmation this week. At this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to our city manager to explain the savings that we found.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. I'll try to do a little better job on this one than the last item. We did receive a reimbursement or rebate check from Texas Municipal League Health, which is the health insurance provider, the pool that we're part of. As a, a member of the pool where we share membership with other Texas cities, as the pool does well, the cities benefit. As the pool may be suffering, cities chip in. And that's, that's the way these, these health insurance pools work. This year, the, the board tried to take the, the COVID-related expenses and, and remove those expenses from its member cities as basically something they could do out of their cash reserves. So that left regular health expenses left to impact the pool in some way. With that said, pool actually had a good year and determined to rebate money from the pool back to its member cities to be used as a credit toward its, its health insurance accounts. Our rebate, we learned, was $37,000 and I believe six cents. So right at $37,000, which interestingly, or, you know, as we had heard before, the 2% increase for the department heads was over $31,000. Pervez has that number. He can.
It was $31,654.
Thirty-one. Yeah, there we go. So the $37,000 does cover that amount. And the, the recommendation you had brought forward last time was, was to take money also from, from the health insurance savings, but from the 10% increase that we had anticipated, whatever amount came in under, under the 10%. We were asked to bring forward what that new number would be tonight. Unfortunately, TML Health does not have that number by tonight, but they did let us know to anticipate 9%. So anticipating that, we felt it was more safe to, to leave that 10% number alone. But with the $37,000 rebate, that does cover the difference.
So at this time, I'd like to make an amendment to give department heads a 2% pay rate and add it to our, our budget. Is that good enough?
I think you need to say where you're taking.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Villa Lobos. And to clarify the motion, it's to give the department heads a 2% raise in this budget and use as funds the savings from the TML Health Pool. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, actually. First of all, thank you, Councilmember Rizzo, for this. And I am so glad we got the, that, that refund check, because I was very leery about approving this while taking out of the insurance. Because while we're being told 9%, TML is not a self-funded plan. They're going by United Healthcare. And insurance companies are notorious for making up any losses in one or two ways. They either increase the rates, or they decrease the reimbursements. So I was very leery about with it being so close to our 10%, nine and 10 to, so I am glad we received that check, because now I can, I can sleep a whole lot better and approve, because the last thing we need to be doing is shorting our insurance premium line item. So thank you.
Good job, Councilmember Rizzo.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Any other amendments or thoughts?
Well, and Mayor, and I'm sorry, because I'm the one who asked everybody not to do an 11th hour, but I'm about to. Apparently, there's now $53,46 available from that refund check. And after tonight's discussion, I would really like to use that money to set up a grant for the businesses along RM 150, to help those businesses out with any address change needed. So that's my proposal.
That's a great, that's a great recommendation. You want to form that in a motion?
Yes, I'd like to motion to approve what I just said.
I'll second whatever she says.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Shields, seconded by the mayor, that we allocate the remaining funds from the TML Health Pool savings to be used in the form of a grant to assist with businesses and other entities that are impacted by the road name re-changing. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. That's a good idea. Well done. Any other thoughts or comments? Mayor? Councilperson Ellison?
I'd like to propose to the council, and I, that we add an additional FTE in a victim's service coordinator position. We currently have one that pretty much is 24/7/365, as we are working to go more toward a compassionate and community policing effort in our city. I would like to propose that we add that position. However, there is a group, I would like instead for it to be directed to staff to pursue the grant that we originally had when, with our position prior. Many of you all remember Samantha Dean. That's how we originally had her position, was through the grant fund. And then the city picked up any additional costs, like benefits for that position. My proposal tonight is to add the FTE, however, with no funding attached to it, to direct staff to pursue the, the grant. And then perhaps have the council do a budget amendment later in the year to do any supplementary cost if we already granted that position via the grant.
Okay. Thoughts or comments? I think, I think that's a great idea, Councilperson Ellison. I think that would work out budgetarily just fine. It's hard to allocate dollars when you don't know what the dollars are. But if we're talking about the, you know, any benefits as being the primary cost, I, I would imagine that would be something in the neighborhood of $10,000 or so. So, but that's just out of my hat. And I, I think that's something that we could absorb in a budget amendment down the, down the road if we were able to get that position successfully filled. So I think that's a great proposal.
It's a, is that a DOJ grant?
I believe so.
Department of Justice grant? Somewhat competitive?
These, these types of grants that are employee-based, if the city's willing to take on a three-year commitment, they're usually pretty easy to obtain.
That's a three-year commitment with, I think the, the idea with those is to take them on as, as, as within the, but to absorb those.
That's correct.
At some point in the budget.
The city would make that commitment.
Was that, was that the same type of grant that was taken up with, with the last person that held that position? We just never allocated it because?
No, we followed the grant appropriately. We, three years, and then we, we assumed that into the general fund.
Okay. So then we should have.
Just like the ju.
Then we should have.
I was going to say, just like the juvenile worker. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
Then it, that's just, if we assume that based on the idea that the grant would, is to start it and then we absorb it within our own budget, then would, I guess we reallocated funds? We just, we, is there salary savings on that? Do we have the, do we have it set up with the, the permanent position?
For, for this current fiscal year?
Right.
Yes, sir. So what we would do, assuming we received the grant this, this fiscal year, is we would come back with a budget amendment.
Okay.
Or if council could determine to take the, the benefits out of salary savings, which if it's mid-year, that's most likely the case, we'll have, you know, it's, I'm going to, I can't remember what the amount is. Chief's, Chief's on the screen. He may tell us exactly what that salary is. I, I believe it was somewhere in the 35,000 to 40,000 range at the first go-around. But go ahead, Chief.
Yes, yes, sir. That's, that's where we started out. And then over the years, as we hired somebody with a, a, a large number of years of experience, as well as the, the tenure that that person has brought to us, that, that salary's gone up. But you're correct, the entry salary is closer to the, to the 40,000. And then we did, Councilmember Villa Lobos, we did have that grant for the three-year requirement. And then the city absorbed that position. And basically, we would be now asking in any grant to add a second person, an additional person, and basically going through the same step to grow the grant, or grow that division into a two-person department, using the grant funds for, up for the three years, and then particularly absorbing that for years four, five, and six and beyond.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, before I interrupted, what I was trying to bring up was the juvenile officer, Officer Pace, and his, his was also, his position was also grant funded. And if I remember correctly, it was not 100% funded for three years. It started at 100, and then we started having to match over time. So there's kind of a phase-in approach. Is that the way this one would work also? Or would it be 100, 100, and then zero?
It would most likely be a, a percentage base to the city. And just like you described, over the, over the period of the three-year grant, our, our percentage might increase. And I say that be well ahead of the announcement of the grant. Typically, these grants are open for application in the very late part of the year and the very early part of the following year. So we're looking at an application period of late November, December, and January. And then those grants are considered by the local council of governments and prioritized within the regional priorities. And then when they're eventually sent to the governor's office to be considered with other grants across the state. So it's very likely that we may not know if we're going to get this grant award. First, first of all, it's very likely we won't know what the requirements are until the end of the year or early 2021. And then second to that, we may not get the grant award notification until possibly even at the end of the summer of 2021. So their, their reporting period is a little bit different than our fiscal year, but we will be looking at all available options. To answer Councilmember Villa Lobos's question, is this a Department of Justice grant? Typically, the VAWA grant that we, our participants in, is a subcomponent of the DOJ larger-picture grant funding. So I assume that will be one of the grants that we will look at, but we will actually look at all of the available grants and bring those back for consideration.
Thank you, Chief. Any other thoughts or comments? Councilperson Ellison, you'd like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we direct staff to pursue the grant for victim service, second victim services coordinator position, and add, and direct staff to add, I, I guess, before I make this motion, Scott, will we have to, would this still add the, necessary to add the FTE?
You could add it now, or we can add it mid-year once we knew we had the grant. Basically, we're, we're authorizing the, the position to be filled if you add it now part of the budget.
Okay. So then I would like to make a, a motion to direct staff to pursue the grant for the victim services coordinator, second victim services coordinator position, and then also add one FTE, one unfunded FTE to this budget.
Second.
Did not catch the second. I heard Shield and a few others, I think. So.
Councilmember Rizzo.
It's been moved by, all right, it's been moved by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we authorized.
That's fine.
The FTE without the funding.
Give it to you.
For victim services coordinator position and direct staff to pursue the grant that's been discussed. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. I'm sorry, Councilperson Ellison, were you wanting to chime in? No, sir. Okay. Any other, any other amendments or proposals? All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Shields. Is there any further discussion? It's a roll call vote item. Go ahead, Jennifer. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Aye.
Coach. Shield.
Aye.
Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Rizzo.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Ellison.
Yes. Okay, motion carries seven to zero. I believe that was the last item.
No.
Tax rate.
Oh, the tax rate. All right, go ahead, councilwoman Shield.
All right, do we need to open the public hearing for the ad valorem tax?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I guess we're going to open the, a public hearing to conduct a public hearing to obtain comments on the proposal to set the city's ad valorem tax, property tax rate at 0.5201 per $100 assessed valuation for tax year 2020, fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
Thank you, councilwoman Shields. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? I think Lila's still on the virtual meeting. Lila, do you want to speak on this one?
And I have a blur. Mayor, I need to read.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak?
No one here.
Okay, if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
No, we're not closing yet because Scott needs to say something.
Mayor, mayor.
Okay, well, there's the objection, so go ahead, still open.
This is the second of two public hearings scheduled on the city's proposed property tax rate for fiscal year 2020, 2021. The first public hearing was held at 7:00 PM on August 18, 2020, at Kyle City Hall, 100 West Center Street, Kyle, Texas, 78640. City's property tax rates for fiscal year 2020, 2021 are as follows. No new revenue tax rate, .5292 per 100. Voter approval tax rate, .5202 per 100. Proposed tax rate, .5201 per 100. City council will consider this meeting on second and final reading of ordinance to set the property tax rate at 5201 per 100 of assessed taxable valuation for fiscal year 2020, 2021. The proposed property tax rate of .5201 per 100 is .0215 or 3.97% below the city's current tax rate of .5416 per 100. The city's proposed property tax rate of .5201 per 100 is also below the no new revenue tax rate of .5292 per 100, and the voter approval tax rate of .5202 per 100 for fiscal year 2020, 21. On August 18, 2020, the Kyle City Council approved on first reading of the property tax rate ordinance for FY 2020, 2021. Kyle City Council is scheduled to vote on second and final reading of the property tax rate ordinance later today. In the city council meeting being held on August 25, 2020, public notices were published in the Hays Street Press newspaper to inform and invite all Kyle taxpayers, residents, and members of the public to attend and express their views to city council on the city's proposed property tax rates. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. One more time, anyone wishing to speak? All right. Are there any objections to closing the public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. We also, so the next item is, councilwoman Shield, go ahead.
A proven ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, fixing the ad valorem tax rate for tax year 2020 at 0.5201 per $100 assessed valuation and providing for the levying of ad valorem taxes for use in support of the municipal government of the city of Kyle for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, providing for proportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing when ad valorem taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent if not paid.
Any comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by councilwoman Shields, seconded by councilwoman Tobias. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Actually, I think in all this that we-
That needs to be a roll call vote. That needed to be a roll-
The tax rate?
Yes, I'm getting head nods here.
All right, roll call vote.
Villa Lobos.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Rizzo.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Tobias.
Aye.
Ellison.
Yes.
Shield.
Aye.
Coach.
President, aye.
All right, motion carries seven to zero. Before we adjourn, we need to open citizen comments. And so we never actually did that. I think Lila wants to speak, so Lila, if you're on the phone, would like to speak, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry to do this to you. It's so late. My name is Lila Knight, and I'd like to know why the city has not made any press releases on the bond proposition B. That would be the $10 million city park bond, of which $7 million will be used for the fajita fields and festival grounds in Uptown Plum Creek. When the TERS was first, TERS number two, was first created for Uptown Plum Creek, the city council promised the citizens that they would not be paying for it. Then later, the TERS ordinance was amended so that the TERS could issue bonds. And now you're proposing to directly give our tax money to that project. And on another topic, I'm still just amazed that you totally ignored the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, which happened August 18, 100 years ago.
Yeah.
We've celebrated National Fajita Day with a proclamation, yet you totally ignored that important day in our nation's history. And one last thing, I was glad to hear tonight how much all of you love our history and appreciate it, and I am looking forward to your respecting that history and your proposed $1.4 million in improvement to our original city park downtown. And I do hope that you will be honoring our authentic history in that park. Thank you, and y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, citizen comments period is now closed. Councilwoman Shield.
Well, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Before I do that, though, I need to make one comment. And yes, I was completely remiss in last Tuesday's historic event. For some reason, I thought, I had it in my head that it happened in November, and so I will be bringing a proclamation next week. So anyway, on that note, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. We adjourn.